It's even better. I never had to do that.
Thank you.
You and them taking my doll.
You can take your doll. So you haven't moved yet?
No, not until September. They're crazy. They're very nervous to get apart. Everybody is torn out and everything goes to me.
What happened to the console?
Good evening and welcome to the June 6, 2024 Northampton County Council meeting. I've asked Linda to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Heckman, would you lead us in the moment of silence?
Well, I thank you, Madam President. Let me just get my crib notes here. My memory isn't as sharp as it used to be. I wanted to take a moment of silence if you would indulge me. Today is the 80th anniversary of D-Day. June 6, 1945, when 150,000 Allied troops hit the beaches. 73,000 troops were killed, 2,500 Americans, numerous, numerous casualties. Americans had Omaha Beach, which was one of the highest casualty counts. 3,600 first day, 750 killed. I mean, 3,600 casualties, 750 killed that day. I think it's important that we take a moment of silence, commemorate those brave young men, most of whom weren't old enough to vote in those days. And as someone who had a relative who was part of that, I think it's a fitting to take at least a moment on their behalf. Thank you. They not only made the world safe for democracy, but they also made it safe for us to do whatever it is we do up here. So I think we need to honor their memory. Oh, no, 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 no.
You're out of order, sir. Wait your turn. Ms. Zembo, will you call the roll?
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Capora.
Here.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gofredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Ms. Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Can I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of May 16, 2024?
Motion.
Can I have?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Tonight, before I do the regular courtesy of the floor, we have something special. For those of you who are outside, come on in. There's still plenty of seats. You know, the county is important. We do a lot of core services, but we would be nothing without our employees. And tonight, we celebrate the retirement of our clerk, who has been an employee for 30 years here?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. It feels like 30, right? But if you're here for Linda Zembo, we have asked some people that have served with her on council, several people expressed their good wishes and couldn't be here this evening. So if there's anybody here who had served with Linda and would like to speak to Linda's special courtesy of the floor, please come forward and do so now.
I'll break the seal.
Thank you.
Imagine that bunch of politicians not jumping up to get to the microphone. Linda, when a county employee retires, they get a certificate of appreciation from the county executive. And this says, "The County of Northampton recognizes Linda Zembo upon her retirement for 27 years of dedicated service to the county, June 6, 2024."
I know the people that did come are not short on words.
I haven't done this in years now. Anyway, Linda, it has been a pleasure. It was a pleasure working with you. And who can forget when Frank Fliesser, who was our clerk forever, had his terrible accident stroke? And you stepped right into unknown territory and just took the ball and ran like a real trooper. And you've done so right up until today. So it was great working with you and good luck and enjoy your grandson and all the other things, the good things that come with retirement.
You know, I agree with Lamont. Any politician who doesn't get up and use a mic when they're given it is probably a fool. So, but I want to say something to Linda directly. And that is that, you know, you come into here, and I came in here with a group of first timers. And we come in here with a lot of thoughts and we come in here with a lot of expectations. Most of them are wrong. And we have to learn exactly what it means to govern in this setting. And we rely on those of you who have been here maybe a little longer than us to get direction from. But we also specifically rely on our clerk, who keeps everything moving every day, who makes sure that all of the paperwork, all of the ordinance, all the resolutions, all of the rights and wrongs. And I learned more from you, I've told you this, I learned more from you in four years than I thought I could learn in a lifetime about what county government really is all about. You always, always were fair, kind, and considerate of every individual that you encountered, regardless of who they were. And that kind of respect for other people is rare, and I truly appreciate it. And I know everyone who works with you and has worked with you, always will. Thank you so much for what you have done for this county.
I came all the way down here, so I'm going to say something. I want to congratulate you on your retirement. In 1978, when we hired Frank Fliesser, we knew someday he would leave. We're so glad that we got somebody of your caliber to take his place. You've been great. I don't know if there's superlatives in all the words to explain to people what you do. But if they look around and they see Ron Engel sitting here, and they have me here, and you're keeping nine people happy. All those years that you worked with Republicans and you worked with Democrats. You all worked together for one main thing, and that was the good of the people. You did an excellent job, and you're going to be very hard to replace. I don't think they'll be able to do it. Congratulations and enjoy the rest of your life.
I usually like to go last. Lamont, I liked that comment about politicians. I never was a politician, by the way, and frankly, I dislike most politicians, and I still do today. But there is public service people and public servants, and that's what Linda Zembo and Frank Fliesser were. They were good public servants. They took care of the county's business, they took care of the council's business, and they'd done a great job. I have to second and third what Peg said and Jerry said. They put it very well. You stepped up when Frank had his problem, and you've done a hell of a job. Thank you.
Hi. Congratulations. It was wonderful working for you. I can remember countless times where I called, I had this question, I had that question, whether it was an email, a fax. It was wonderful having you in that position. There was no question that you couldn't answer for me or get back to me as soon as possible. And I know that serving as council president, that the preparation of the notes, what you see is not possible if it weren't for the notes that Frank and then you prepare for us and get us ready. The council president could not function. So I thank you for making that job look easy. And retirement is wonderful. I didn't choose to be retired, but you will enjoy it, and I wish you a wonderful time with your family going forward. Thank you again.
I won't be long, but I just wanted to say thank you for the years of service that you have had on this council and specifically the six years that I served. I know that you were a huge help to me. And not only that, the fact that you treat people like they're human beings and not just one of nine individuals sitting here is really important. Your consideration, your kindness, and the way that you were so generous in your help, that's so greatly appreciated because I think when you come to this job, you know that it's a limited number of hours, you're trying to do the best that you can. And if not for your support and for your guidance, that job would have been exponentially more difficult. So I want to thank you for just being there for us and for the county, because that's what public service is. So enjoy your retirement. I know you will. You're going to have great grandkids to, well, no, you're going to have your grandkids, not great grandkids, but you're going to have grandkids to play with and to offer your love too. So thank you so much.
Any other former council folks or employees that wanted to say a few words? How about up here on the dais? Anyone here want to say a few words? Go ahead, Ken.
Linda, thank you for everything you've done. I've been here since, what, 2010 or whenever it was? And all the things you've done, we really do appreciate it. And I'll just, everything everybody else said to make this short, but thank you. Thank you.
Linda, thank you so much for all your help in the last, since January. I haven't known you long, but it was really nice working with you. I hope you enjoy your retirement.
There was one word that some folks used down here, and it has meant so much to me in the very short time that I've been here since January, and that word is kindness. It's not just about pushing paperwork, putting things out here on the dais. It's not about that. It's for somebody like myself, kindness, that's what it means. And you have been that the past six months to me and to all these members of council. And thank you. Enjoy retirement. Enjoy your time with your family.
Everybody said what needed to be said. I just want to say, I remember when she walked in for a job interview when I was Director of Human Services. Somebody had moved on, and I interviewed her, and it was a great interview. We ended up, for that particular position, went with someone else. But I, but... Trying to keep it real, but there's a...
It was the best decision.
But it was, believe me, it was a better decision for her. The person did great, but they knew how the county operates, and they knew how you can get trapped in 100 different little things. So, and Linda didn't at that time really know much about the county, but she had a great background. So I immediately got on the phone, because Renee, who worked here, had left. And I said, "Franzel," I'm sorry, Frank, Mr. Fliesser, I always refer to him as Franzel, I still do. I said, "You've got to interview this lady." And he said, "Well, what do you mean?" And I said, "Look, I know that Renee is leaving, and you're going to need somebody as an assistant." And she had a great interview. And I said, "And, you know, she can do great in that job. I mean, I know you're going to be out there looking around." I said, "You know, great knowledge, great ability to learn. I think she'd be wonderful. And also, you can protect her from some of the vultures around here until she gets her feet, you know, gets her feet wet." So I was, you know, and so while I did not hire her for that job in Human Services, in many ways, I think I protected her and got her into a better position. Because, I mean, when Frank left, I wasn't on council, but I'm sure she jumped in right away. Frank always respected Linda, because, I mean, he and I communicated, and he only had kind things to say about her. And it's a tough job. It was mentioned, you've got to keep nine people happy. And that is really, that's probably the toughest job up here. You've got nine egos, nine personalities, and it's tough. I remember when I first got elected, I'd go to Frank Fliesser, I'd say, "I have this great idea." You know, you come in, you want to fix the world and all that. And I'd bounce it off of him, and he'd say, "Hold your horses. You know what you can't do in it." And it took a good year or so to pick up on it, and even then, you don't know. So bottom line is, Linda, it's been a pleasure. I've known you for, since you've been with the county. I've often called, I call Linda directly, and I say, "What's the scoop? What's going on?" And she's been a great help to me, and I just want to thank you for everything you did, and I'm going to do something politically incorrect.
Linda, I first worked with you first as county executive, so I had the perspective from the administrative side, having to work with council and have a little bit of an understanding of what goes on behind the scenes. And while these meetings take place X number of times, you know, for a few hours over the course of the year, all the work that takes place in between, you know, it's monumental. I think part of it is the relationships that you have, not just with the council members and the staff here, but across the county. Because there's, we have to touch and handle so many departments, so much information, and you just make it easy. You bring it together. And now, sitting on council on this side, I've got to see what it takes to make it work on this side also. And it is monumental overall. And all the other things that have been said, I'll double down on that. So I do appreciate you. I appreciate the work you've done. I think I'll miss the conversations we get to have about grandkids. Thank you.
To people who don't know Linda, Linda, all the superlatives that were used here tonight are, frankly, they're not doing it justice. I came in here not knowing anybody and don't know who to trust, don't know who to think are being genuine, and who are just trying to, you know, manipulate you. One of my first meetings, you paid me a small compliment, but I could tell it was genuine. I knew right away you were a truly and honest and genuinely nice person, someone I could trust. And I leaned on you. We've talked, whether it was, you know, just about family or something related to work here. And you've always been somebody who's been here for 27 years, kept an optimistic outlook. It gives reason to hope that, you know, things get better and things, you know, keep a good outlook, and things will continue to get better. So good luck. I hope the rest of your time in retirement are better than the years you've spent, you know, in work. Hope your best years are ahead of you, you know?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Linda, I'll miss you. You know, I make you laugh, and you laugh all the time. It's been great. You do a wonderful job. I've called, you always answered everything I needed. You helped me along. It's been a great five years with you. It's been wonderful. And again, I love to see your smiles, always make you laugh. So congratulations to your retirement.
I would just like to say, I appreciate how welcoming you were to me on my first day here. I didn't know what I was getting into. You put my mind at ease. You gave me enough resources to make me effective. So I truly appreciate that. Good luck in your retirement.
A long, healthy, and joyous retirement. And it's been said 1,000 times, I'll say 1,000 times more. Thanks for all that you have done and have helped all of us. Obviously, the commissioners and the staff as well. A heartfelt thank you.
Everybody said so much and covered so much. I just am truly going to miss you. I think, though, that Gio might put you on one of his pit stops, because you know how he likes to circle around the county? So he might be stopping by with coffee and donuts some day, so don't be surprised if he comes to your door. I think, along with what everybody said, I love the balance that you bring to this because you are truly kind, but you knew when to be no nonsense and business when that was time too. And so you have this perfect balance of kindness, compassion, and like, let's get to work. And I always appreciated that. Like Glenn said, you could not do this job without, I couldn't do this without you here, none of it. And I also appreciate how much that you've been a mentor to so many people. You've told me the stories about how you used to have the parties and ladies that used to get together and the camaraderie that you used to try to bring to the office, to make it not just an office, but a place that people felt welcomed, not just us, but extended out from council. So I think that will also be very missed. But I appreciate you and everything you've done for me, for us as a body, for the county. It's so nice to see your family here. Are we going to get them down here at some point or get them to say hi? Her daughter was sitting behind the desk tonight and went, "Hi, Linda," and it wasn't Linda, her daughter looks just like her. We have a few trinkets to impart to you. I don't have the proclamation. Do we have the proclamation? We have one. It's really long. So we should, so, should we stand or should we sit? In honor and recognition of 27 years of dedicated public service to the citizens of Northampton County, whereas Linda Zembo began her public service from 1970, 1980 in FBI Steno Pool Section as Secretary for the Informants Office, and then was promoted to Assistant Supervisor. She began with the county in 1997 in domestic relations, then moved to adult probation in 1998. Whereas Linda M. Zembo moved to the County Council's office in 2001 as the Executive Secretary to County Council. In the years that followed, she performed the duties of running the office with such competence that she was appointed the second clerk to council in 2015. She has served with four different county executives, as well as more than 35 different council members in her 24 years serving county council. Now therefore be it resolved on the occasion of her retirement as clerk to the Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council does hereby honor and commend the true dedication and commitment of Linda M. Zembo toward public and county service. Further, congratulations and a heartfelt thank you to Linda M. Zembo, as her guidance and wisdom have helped the county council deliver carefully, thoughtfully, wisely, and with the best interests of the citizens of Northampton County. Best wishes are extended for success in all future endeavors. And there's quite a list of hooligans that you can... And this is just a little token of our appreciation. Just one. I think there's more. You could read that. Uh-oh. There's more. This is a somewhat smaller token of our appreciation. It's the Afghan you never had.
It's a running joke.
Oh, absolutely.
Every known family gets one.
Your mic's on, so be careful. Your family could hear you.
Yeah, be careful. Hi, everyone. My sister Linda is one of the most precious, honest, and wonderful people I've ever known. And she got me started in the business world. And I've always tried to emulate everything she showed me. But more than that, Linda, I want you to know that Mom's here with us, and she is so proud of you. I love you and enjoy your retirement, and thank everybody for all your nice words.
Wait, here comes the kid.
Hi, Mom. I never thought you would retire. Never did. But I learned a lot from you. I work at the county because of you. You're the one that told me, "Go for the job." And I just want to say, I'm proud of you. I loved hearing everything they had to say about you. You're an amazing person. So I'm glad you're getting the recognition that you deserve. Love you. Okay, it's my honor to have worked for the county. And I will always remember the many people who I met and worked with over the years, especially the past and present council members. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Frank Fliesser, Sharon, Christine, Aileen, Genesia, for their help and support during all my years on county council. Thank you, everybody, for your kind words. I didn't expect it. It's much appreciated. And I did have a wonderful time here, and I'm looking forward to leaving it behind.
We're going to take a little picture. Sorry, photo op. We're going to, we're going to scooch in and take a picture with her. Come on, move over this way. Yeah, come over this way, and they're going to cut in the end zone. It's up to him if he wants to come. Wait, wait, wait. Just one more. Wait, one more, one more. Thank you. Thank you, family. Thank you, friends. Do I need to get out of the way for this? No, you guys should be under the seal. Let me get out of the way.
Yep, you need your chair, for now at least, right?
And we do have refreshments in the back for anybody from council who wants a refreshment. Thank you. All right.
Thanks for the memory.
Thank you to the public and everybody who's been patiently waiting, but I just felt it was very important to acknowledge her service and thank you all, for those of you who came out. Those who couldn't, I'll share some of those wishes with Linda later as well. So now we'll get into the official courtesy of the floor. And I just wanted to state that tonight, we will also be having a public hearing on the TIF. So if you... So if you want to save comments regarding that for that time in the agenda, you are welcome to do so. You don't need to make them at this time. I have certain people signed up, five minutes per person, max. And again, if you choose to defer to public comment time, you're welcome to do so. First, I have Armando Moritz Chappaquelin.
It feels very unfair to be the first speaker after all of that.
Well, yeah, it's not bad.
Good evening, folks. My name's Armando Moritz Chappaquelin. I'm primarily here for the public hearing. This will be happening later, but there's some flyers that are going to be getting passed around because I also wanted to extend an invitation to folks on behalf of the Wilson Area Communities of Care Coalition. You'll see the flyer that's making its way around specifically is for a community walk that we are doing this weekend. To provide a little bit of context on the Wilson Area Communities of Care Coalition, it's a coalition of local neighborhood-based groups, organizations, the school district, residents, business owners, who want to see greater attachment to the community and improve youth outcomes for middle school and high school age youth. A lot of the data that we use to inform some of our planning and programming is particularly around Pennsylvania area youth survey data or PACE data that the school districts do every year or every couple of years. And one of the things that we identify there is specifically attachment to community. And so one of the risk factors that we saw was that there is a very low attachment to community in the Wilson Area School District. And so one of the things that we had talked about or thought about doing to build more attachment to community is to get students out and get residents out into the community and see what can actually be done in our community to make it more community-oriented, to make it more engaging, to make it more friendly for those middle school and high school age students. So we're going to be doing a community walk starting on the western end of Muser Park, which I think it says that on the flyer as well. And we'll be ending over at the Wilson Area High School. So that's this weekend. We're going to have snacks and water as well, but we'll be making periodic stops throughout the course of the walk where we're just going to be asking people, "What do you see here and what would you want to see here instead? Are there things here that you particularly like? Are there things here that you would want to see improved upon? Are there things here that you're really passionate about that you want to see strengthened or preserved?" And so it's an open invitation. If folks are available to make it, you can either scan the QR code or you can come find me as well. But it's this Saturday, and if you want to show up unannounced as well, that's totally fine. But we should have a pretty good turnout. So looking forward to hopefully seeing some of you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Nat Hyman.
Good evening. My name is Nat Hyman, and I was asked to be here this evening by a member of your council to elaborate upon an email that I had sent to Bernie O'Hare related to articles he had written about the development of the Dixie factory and the associated TIF. He subsequently published that email on his blog. I understand that I'm under tight time constraints, so I will keep my comments brief and speak quickly. As the person who has likely done more adaptive reuse projects than anyone else in the Lehigh Valley, many of which are almost identical to the Dixie factory, I am here simply to share my opinions on the subject. First, one disclaimer. I did attempt to buy the Dixie factory. Contrary to the conspiracy theorists out there, I'm not here today to sabotage this project so that I can buy it. I have more than enough on my plate, and Joseph Reebman has made it abundantly clear that he will never sell me the building. And after my comments tonight, I think that's a fait accompli. As I made clear in my email to Mr. O'Hare, I very much want to see this property developed and returned to productivity. As I recently purchased a 102,000 square foot building less than one mile away from Dixie, I am now invested in this specific area and want to see the whole area improve. But it must be developed successfully and expeditiously to benefit this neighborhood. I believe your evaluation of this matter should be binary in nature. That is, you need only ask two questions. One, is it necessary to grant a TIF to have this property developed? And what message would that TIF send to other potential developers? And two, is this developer the best option to whom you entrust $29 million of TIF money and potentially $10 million in R cap money to successfully develop this property? Let's take the first question. Is the TIF necessary? The short answer is absolutely not. Now, I know Mr. McClure has been zealously screaming from the rooftops and posting on every known social media about how great this project is and how important it is to approve the TIF. I can't speak to what his motives are, but the immutable evidence that a TIF is absolutely not needed here is that I made an offer to buy the building for $7 million and was not going to ask for a TIF or any other assistance. To be clear, I am the expert on these projects, not Mr. McClure. And I am telling you that a TIF is categorically not needed there. It is not up for debate. Put even more succinctly, if Mr. Reebman would agree to accept a $7 million check from me, I would write him a check today and sign a contract not to take TIF, R cap, or any other assistance. Instead, according to the TIF plan, they are paying $12 million, which by the way is odd, given that it has been advertised for the last several years at $10 million. And if you went on LoopNet right now, you would see it advertised for $10 million. I gave you all a copy of today's LoopNet listing for $10 million. So the taxpayers are paying $29 million in TIF and $10 million in R cap to pay Mr. Reebman $5 million more for the property. It is that simple. I have previously developed many of these buildings, including some almost identical to the Dixie factory, like the 325,000 square foot Adelaide Building in Allentown. In Northampton County alone, I have completed the 130,000 square foot Lincoln Commons Project in Nazareth, and will be undertaking two other substantial developments, all affordable housing, all with no TIF. So the question is, why am I able to do this affordable housing, adaptive reuse projects with no TIF? And these people need $29 million to do luxury housing. Is it because the Dixie presents some unique challenges? The answer, again, is absolutely not. I will shortly begin work converting the Northampton Brewery to 70 affordable apartments. I have brought with, I gave you tonight, a package of pictures so that you can make very clear the significant challenges I will face with this project. Enormous 20-foot wide holes in the floors where brewing vats existed. Entire concrete floors that are only seven feet high that have to be removed. Six-story stairwells and elevators that must be created. All new window openings that have to be structurally reinforced. Entire concrete floors which are slanted with troughs for the beer runoff. Concrete platforms must be jackhammered out. And all new underground stormwater and catch basins and entirely new parking lots. None of this work is necessary at Dixie. Compared to the brewery project, the Dixie redevelopment is a walk in the park. In Dixie, all of the window openings exist. They simply need the existing windows replaced with all new windows and mullions. Inside, it's an empty shell. After removing some lead paint and asbestos, which we all contend with in buildings of this age, it is ready to run new systems and build the apartments. There is minimal demolition, minimal structural work, and the parking lots already exist. We all can agree that the building is a mess and an eyesore in desperate need of redevelopment. But ask yourself if that should be rewarded with a TIF. The building is in this disrepair because it was left to atrophy and was never maintained. Are we, as taxpayers, now going to reward that negligence with a tax benefit? Also ask yourself, is granting a TIF here fair to all of us who are doing identical work without the benefit of government largess? As I said, I'm doing a 102,000 square foot building less than a mile away. May I please have $29 million? Granting a TIF to this project will create an uneven and unfair playing field. It is bad precedent. The government will be picking winners and losers, and I can't imagine that you want to be in that position. And as far as Mr. McClure touting how great it is that the developer will be contributing $1 million to some affordable housing fund, well, if you give me $29 million, I'll be happy to contribute $1 million to anything you want. That's a brilliant business play. I would proffer that thinking like that is the difference between using your own money and taxpayer money. So we are left with the enduring question as to how do you get the Dixie factory developed without a TIF? My friends, the answer is simple. Enforce the building codes on the building now. It is unsafe, unsightly, and unfair to all the good neighbors who maintain their properties. Building codes should have been enforced years ago.
One minute, sir.
Hmm?
One minute, sir.
Okay. Well, I gave you the whole thing. This whole speech is... Directing the owner to promptly bring the building up to code will enforce to sell the building to a responsible developer at a reasonable price. No TIF will be necessary. Then you can sit back and watch the building go through an exciting metamorphosis and watch your tax rolls swell immediately, not in 20 years. As to the second question, to be clear, I don't know Mr. Barti. I don't know Skyline Investment Group, and I've never heard of them. All I know is what Mr. O'Hare uncovered. A few quick points, he has never developed anything, not one building. On his website, he claims he has developed one project, the Louis. That's a lie. It does not exist. He claims to have five offices. That's a lie. They do not exist. He told the morning call he would not apply for other government assistance. That's a lie. He's applying for R cap money. And finally, at $155 million for 400 units, it is mathematically impossible to charge the rents that he is quoting of $1,800 to $2,900 a month. I gave you a copy of my speech if you'd like to see why. I won't enumerate it. My time limit does not allow me to go through all these points and the red flags, but the bottom line is, if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, chances are it's a duck. Put simply, folks, you're being scammed. Don't be swayed by pretty renderings and promises of rooftop pools. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And you can speak at public comment if you so choose also. Thank you.
I'm here to speak about the abortion sanctuary, that you want to turn Northampton County into an abortion sanctuary. I don't think those people who died on D-Day or those veterans who are disabled did so so that we could sanctify murder. We all now have scientific proof that the sperm and the egg and the fetus and the baby, they're human life. That's human life. These are the weakest and the most innocent among us. And if you plan to make this county an abortion sanctuary, you are opening yourself up to tremendous wrath. There's so many millions of babies that have been killed already in this country, millions and millions and millions beyond number. And this is why they say we're allowing all these immigrants to come in, because we have to replace. We don't have enough people to work, do we? Because we killed them all. Our founding fathers based this country in life, liberty, the protection, protection of life, pursuit of happiness. These little ones will not even get to pursue happiness. They'll never see the light of day. If our founding fathers could see what you're considering now, they would flip and roll in their graves. I don't want to be living in a county that sanctifies murder. Our Lord said, "Whatever you do to the least of these, you have done unto me." If you read Leviticus, it talks about the curses that come upon not obeying the commandments. You may not be believers. Doesn't matter if you're a believer or not. This comes. This is law. You obey the commands of God, you get tremendous blessings. You flout it? You throw away His gifts? The curses that are going to come to this county are insanely, to be feared. This is a real, real... I've been fighting for pro-life causes for decades. And to think that my county... I don't know what your thinking would be. Are we going to get hotel income? Are we going to get more tourism? Is this your idea of tourism? Are we going to get money coming in? What does this look like to you? And once we are the center of abortions, once we're the center... We already have, Pennsylvania State allows 24 weeks for an abortion. At six months, a baby can survive outside the womb. That's okay. And that's okay. Let people come from surrounding states and let them come in here and kill their babies here on our soil. Is this the kind of county you want to all live in?
Absolutely. Absolutely not.
I don't want to live in such a county.
Wait, wait, wait. Public comment, one person. Y'all don't need to call and respond. We're not in church. Thank you.
Okay. I would just end on saying, if you wanted to, you will be responsible for this. You will make a decision and you will be responsible personally, each one who votes for this. I hope you look good in millstones. That's all I have to say. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. And thank you for the... Thank you for respecting the time that people have. You are given the same amount of time if you so choose. Next, we have Donald Barrett.
I'm going to defer to the hearing.
Thank you. Mary Ann Morales.
I remember you guys from last year, some of you. I'm also here to comment about the abortion sanctuary proposal that was brought forth last month. And I come from a very different place. As my understanding, just so we understand the platform, the reasoning behind this proposal is to preserve the erosion of women's rights. That's what I gleaned from the transcript. Okay, just so that's how you know where I'm coming from. And this is something that needs to deserve careful consideration. Because with every medical decision, we all know this, if you take an aspirin, there's benefits and there's risks involved. So a little bit about my history. I'm going to talk about myself. I got into pharmaceutical sales in the early 90s. I worked in Hudson County, New Jersey. I called on Medicaid doctors. I called on Planned Parenthood. I sold women's health care contraceptives that were implantable devices, as well as oral contraceptives, prenatal vitamins, which is kind of interesting mix, and also post-menopausal drugs. And I was trained to sell these products to physicians. I trained residents in the local hospitals down there in Jersey City and Hudson County. And I believed that these were safe and effective medications that would help women be able to live the life that they wanted to live. Okay? And I was very good at my job. I was number one. And then I was transferred to the Lehigh Valley. And so I get where you guys are coming from. You want, we want to preserve everybody's right to live. But what happened, I was in the business for 10 years, and I started to notice, or I'm going to call it misguided compassion by the physicians, because they take an oath to do no harm. And all of the guys in the Lehigh Valley want the best for all of us. I'm just going to let you know that because I called on most of the obstetricians in the area. But what I began to see is a very subtle arrogance. So patient comes in, wants to prevent childbearing for some time. We're all getting married later in life. We're late bloomers. And the doctor gives her a medication, hopefully mine, to prevent pregnancy. And he's thinking, he's checking two boxes. I'm going to say it's a teenager. She's going to be able to live the life that she wants to live, and I'm checking the box for an unplanned pregnancy. I'm preventing a future abortion. Well, there's a little-known fact that the escape ovulation rate in oral contraceptives is over 30%. So the medical protocol after contraceptive fails, let's say for a teen girl, she's afraid her mom and dad are going to kill her, is abortion. But there is something called informed consent. And what has happened is these patients don't, the physicians aren't understanding what happens to the women afterwards. I've come tonight, I work for an OB-GYN, Dr. Mary Ann Freeman Brinjar, and I represent the United Hearts Life Mission. And through my journey selling these products and seeing what's going on in medicine, I call it misguided compassion, I realized that what I was promoting, and I'm very ashamed of this, is a set of medical ethics that said that it's okay to control a woman's body, her fertility, that's normal and functioning. It's okay to do that so she can live the lifestyle that she would like to live. Now, Dr. Bernard Nathanson was the abortion king. And as you know, he trained most professionals in the United States of America how to conduct abortions. This was back in the 70s. He used to scrape the womb until the ch- He used to scrape the womb until the Chinese introduced a new technology that basically acted as a vacuum. Okay? And it's interesting, the number that you brought up for D-Day. My father was a World War II vet. When he was asked, he said he was responsible for terminating two of his own children's lives and 74,000 babies in the womb. Wow. I mean, we just prayed for all those people that passed away. And he realized, what made him drop that vacuum was the invention from Scotland of the ultrasound machine. He said that was a window into the womb. So what he did was he went to Jersey with this other doctor.
One minute, please.
Okay. And he did an ultrasound-guided termination. And it was at that moment that he was caring, he realized that he was sacrificing one patient so another one could do as she pleased. So I am begging you guys to carefully consider what you're about to do, because the sanctuary in this country should be the woman's womb. So for the justice of all of the unborn babies, I am a voice for the unborn. I am begging you to put your money and effort into breaking the glass ceiling so women can have a job and take care of their family. Babies are good. Babies are not a risk. They're a gift. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Leah Leroux. Is that correct?
Hi. I'm nervous, so I will try to be brief as well. I am also talking about the...
Try to speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm also here to talk about the abortion sanctuary. But I just really, I'm coming from a completely different perspective because I'm actually post-abortive. So I think that it's very much a real thing, but you don't really get to see, like, post-abortive people that actually, like, say they're post-abortive. I'm sorry. Is that better? So I'm post-abortive, and I just want everybody to understand the intense things that come with this, I guess, not burden, but what you choose to do. And I think that Northampton County is so beautiful, and what they offer to children, to senior citizens, is incredible. And you have so many things to offer, but bringing this in is just so... There's so many things that come with that. The mental health piece alone is so stifling. It is incredible. I didn't talk about my issue for nine years. I held it. And what that did was incredibly horrible to me. I think that that is something that is not talked about. And it's really sad, because if I had the option to talk about it prior and eliminate all those things that happened in my life, I think that that is really something that I would have done, and it would have saved me a lot of stress, pain, suffering. I mean, you name it, I went through it. I was able to have three kids after the fact. But I think that it's really important to talk about that mental health piece, because it is such a huge factor today, that we don't have enough mental health out there for people in general. And so bringing this to Northampton County, the fact is that, you know, partnering with mental health providers and getting everything situated and established beforehand is crucial, and that needs to be done. There needs to be steps. And so my ask is that this is something that you highly consider before going forward with this, just because everybody's always concerned about the financial piece, right? And so what does mental health bring? You know, these women, I'm one of them, it's not talked about, like I said. And what happens is that it spirals. So they get to a certain point, you can only handle so much. And then you go to the emergency room, and they can't find anything wrong because you have all these issues, but it keeps building up. The financial impact is huge. And that is something to really consider, because the financial impact for a post-abortive woman is huge. And also, the risk of, you know, patients having complications. I was one of those patients. I was very... I was hemorrhaging. And so I think that that is also another thing that you really, I mean, understanding the whole aspect of, from, you know, what your plans are to actually hearing from a post-abortive person is huge. And I think that maybe that would give everybody some perspective. So I hope I was able to give that, and I just ask that that be consideration. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jessica Elliott.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you again. I'm Jessica Elliott. I'm the executive director at Habitat for Humanity of Lehigh Valley. Not here to talk exactly about the TIF, but obviously in support of affordable housing. Obviously, the county has supported us in big ways in our joint project with the county through Kesslerville Road Project. And through some of that project, we've seen some comments, and so I thought it was also just important to remind our community and all of you, the people that we're serving through our program at Habitat, what we offer is a 0% interest mortgage through a 30-year period. So that is what keeps a home affordable for people. They pay taxes, they pay insurance, just like anybody else would if you were getting your mortgage from the bank. And also, we see a lot of comments about whether or not we're serving illegal immigrants, people who are just moving here from New York, New Jersey. And I think it's important to put all of those things to rest, because at Habitat in particular, we do have a one-year residency requirement, so we are serving current Northampton County residents. The other people that we're serving are those people that we served or saw so important during COVID. They are not people that are not employed. These are people who are working in our hospital systems and in our grocery stores. They're working as home health aides. We have teachers. We have teacher's assistants. We have daycare workers. So when we're talking about maybe not having enough people to fill these jobs or filling employment, it's because people cannot afford to live where they work. And so it's important that we, as a county, are supporting those projects just as much as we're supporting, you know, the higher-end or luxury apartments, whatever people want to call them. I think it's important that, as a county, we're also making sure that those members of our community can continue to live where they work. We have people driving an hour away to work for St. Luke's Health Network. That should not be okay. There's a reason there's long waits in the hospital systems and in the emergency rooms, and it's, again, because people cannot afford to live where they work. The transancy rates in our school, we want to support education, we want to talk about the kids being successful. Through stable housing, kids are 25% more likely to graduate from high school and 116% more likely to graduate from college. So again, when we talk about affordable housing, it's about also making sure that we're decreasing the transancy rate in the school and making sure the kids that are on free and reduced lunch can also afford a place to live. So thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it. Just a reminder of when we're moving forward with projects, how much it is important to also keep affordable housing included in those plans.
Thank you very much. Anna Lee Giddish. Did I say that correctly or incorrectly?
Gaidish.
Gaidish, sorry. You know, it's always fun trying to do that.
Figure out names, yeah. Well, I'm also here on to talk about the Right to Choose Sanctuary County. So I'm coming from a different perspective as well. I'm a member of Queenship of Mary Church on Newport Avenue in Northampton, and I'm an individual who has been treated for miscarriage at Lehigh Valley Muhlenberg Hospital. So I've gone through years of infertility, and finally, in November of last year, I found out I was pregnant. I use scientific means of fertility tracking that lets me know the exact day I ovulate. It's called Creighton Model. I knew the exact gestational age my baby was, yet I was hit with a very big question early on. When do people tell others about their baby? I told my husband right away, and we knew that usually people wait until the second trimester. But why? Why do people wait? Because miscarriages often happen in the first trimester. Hmm. Yet, wait. When do abortions take place? Usually, the first trimester. It seems to me that people are trying to keep themselves from humanizing the unborn, from celebrating the life that was gifted to them in case they decide to have an abortion or in case they miscarry. They want to keep themselves from something, but what, to be exact? They want to keep themselves from pain and the reality of it. If we humanize the unborn in the first trimester, if we acknowledge the science instead of the emotions in this situation, we have to sit with the pretty truth, human life begins at conception, that human beings die in miscarriages and abortions. So what do we do instead? We hide it. In abortion, we kill it. Now, I want to make something very clear tonight. What I know is that when Roe v. Wade was overturned, many people began spouting misinformation. I ended up miscarrying in January of this year. I'd still be pregnant. And I have been hit with the reality that abortion advocates compare what happened to me to an abortion. They act like miscarriage treatment will be taken away if abortion access is lost. That is a lie. Here I am on behalf of women who have had miscarriages or ectopic pregnancies and who are pro-life to say that anyone who tells you a doctor will not treat you for a miscarriage because of a law is lying. Those doctors are committing malpractice, and they're using miscarriage to advance abortion laws. Babies tragically lost through miscarriage need to be removed if they do not pass naturally. That's common sense. But let's make this clear. Miscarriage happens naturally. Abortion kills a still-living human being. One is unintentional, one is intentional. It is wrong to directly kill an innocent human being. Abortion is the direct killing of an innocent human being. Therefore, abortion is wrong. There is a stark difference between what happened to me and what happens to a woman in abortion, but I want to quickly draw attention to some differences and similarities. I naturally lost the baby through a medical condition, and abortion pill forces a hard stop on otherwise healthy pregnancy. Miscarriages are often unexplainable. And 98% of abortions have nothing to do with life of the mother and fetal abnormalities. I began bleeding at six weeks gestation. I saw a beating heart on the screen at Lehigh Valley Health Network during an ultrasound. I saw the shape of a body. Yes, it didn't look like you and I, but we're not idiots. We don't come from storks. We slowly develop intimately within our mothers' wombs. So the woman who takes an abortion pill at the same stage would see a heartbeat, not be passing a clump of cells. If that scientifically human being is a clump of cells, so are you and I, because there was a functioning heart and circulatory system, a developing brain, eyes, and nervous system. I buried my baby. Women who take the abortion pill are told to keep flushing. Miscarriage isn't pretty. Abortion is horrifying. Child loss is just that, child loss. And whether we are small or not, we are still human, and we have unique DNA that separates us, but yet unites us genetically to our parents. I did not have an abortion. Again, my baby died unexplainably. Her name was Cecilia Rose. And I just want to say, as I bled profusely during my miscarriage, I could not help but think that this is what every woman goes through in a chemical abortion. It was horrifying. It wasn't just a heavy period, as they called it. It was dangerous, and I needed to seek medical attention. This happened naturally and slowly, but chemical abortions force a hard stop to a healthy pregnancy and forces the body to begin ejecting a dead baby after it is starved. And that's 40% of abortions in the United States. What upset me the most through this process, again, is what happened to me is often compared to what happens to a woman during an abortion. I did not cause this. Miscarriage is different than abortion. Abortion is, I want to say, evil, like killing, masquerading as women's empowerment. And really, blood will be on your hands if you vote yes on this. Please vote no to the Right to Choose Sanctuary County. Thank you.
Next, we have Kizzy Johnson.
Hi. Can you hear me? Hi. All right. My name is Kizzy Johnson, and I am the chief staff steward for Northampton County DHS SEIU Local 668. And today, I represent our unit's essential workers from the Department of Aging, Drug and Alcohol, Early Intervention, and Mental Health, Children and Youth, and Families, Emergency Services, and Information and Referral. We are clerical workers, we're fiscal tax, we are case aides, we are social workers. Today, I'm not only talking to council, but I'm also going to be talking to the citizens and taxpayers of Northampton County. I'm here to tell you that despite what you are being retold and the reports that you are being given, we are not okay. For many years, members have tried to tell this county and even this council about issues that are plaguing our workforce. We have taken surveys, we have participated in work groups, and we have provided solutions, and we have come here. We have been waiting for a change to happen, but our voices have fallen on deaf ears. And because of the strain and inaction, our workforce has continued to crumble more and more every year. Since 2020, Northampton County DHS has lost over 188 employees. Can I give you that? Some employees retired, some were terminated, but most have voluntarily resigned due to low wages and feeling undervalued. We have recruitment and retention issues across our agencies, and it's plaguing our workforce and making our job unbearable. Since getting... Yes, we've gotten out of civil service, and we are hiring. But hiring 20 employees, but then losing 20 employees in the same year, pretty much is a loss to everybody. And a huge loss for the county and the taxpayers who are hiring and training new employees to then come and then to leave. Today, our largest department alone has nearly 30 vacancies. And every colleague that we lose, we lose our morale. Every resignation sets all of our agencies further back and creates more risk to our clients, and it creates risk to us. But we love our jobs. We love Northampton County, and we take pride in the impact we have on our community. And many of us will go to lengths to help our families in need. But the deficiencies have massive detriment to our workforce, and we are literally struggling to hang on. We are in peril, and if something is not done to repair the cracks immediately, we are destined to crumble and go beyond repair. We cannot sustain this. And over the last nine months of negotiations, we have tried to express to administration what we believe are the best solutions for improvement, but we have been brushed aside. And I know what everybody's saying, if you don't like it, get another job. Well, let me tell you this. Who will ensure the safety of the babies born that are addicted? Who will intervene when a child reports abuse? Who is going to investigate the 9,000 reports that Northampton County got last year? And who is going to investigate the 9,000 reports that we're probably going to get this year? Who is going to protect the aging individuals being abused by their caregivers or who are preyed upon by opportunists? Who's going to bring them food? And who's going to make sure that they're cool during blistering summer heat? Who ensure that our toddlers and our infants get early intervention services so they can meet their childhood milestones? Who's going to provide guidance, treatment, referrals, and support to individuals struggling with mental health disturbances or substance abuse? Who's going to be around to answer those 1:00 a.m. phone calls from people who need help? And who are going to help those families that are calling us to come out and help their families get into treatment? Who will help Northampton County residents obtain information and referrals they need to access county services? And who's going to be around to ensure that our court-involved families see each other? That our care providers' invoices are paid? That our paperwork, that everything that we're filing for our families for the courts is being handled and organized and sent out? Who's going to be there if we all leave? We love our jobs. We love the county we work in, and we want the best for our clients. But things are not okay. We need qualified workers. We need people to stay, and we need them to utilize their experience for this county, for the residents of this county. We need a fair contract. We need a fair contract. We need livable wages. We should not have to beg. We should not have to ask year in, year in, year to let us have some livable wages, because guess what? We can't live where we work. And since no one is listening, we are going to advocate for ourselves and bring value to what we do, for our clients, for our professions, for our very, very hard work, and for ourselves. If we really are here to create a progressive county that's vibrant and dynamic and a great place to work and live, then we all have to ensure that all the citizens in this county, especially the most vulnerable, are mentally and physically healthy. And we cannot do that if we cannot even stay where we are, if we cannot work and live and get a pay that keeps us there. And not too long ago, Mr. McClure stated that we are all in this together, and the success of one of us contributes to the success of all of us. So with that being said, we hope this county and everybody here and the citizens of Northampton County acknowledge us, help strengthen us, because only with all of us working together and lifting each other up can we create a better future for this county, for the citizens of this county, for the children of this county, for the aging individual of this county, for the people that are suffering with substance abuses and mental health disturbances. All of us together need to work together to make this work in this county. But we cannot do it alone. We need help. We need support. We need livable wages, and we should not have to beg for that from a progressive county like Northampton County in solidarity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor at this time? Again, if you want to speak about the TIF, you also have another opportunity. But if you want to speak, I'll take the next person. State your name, where you're from, and... Oh, I was going to write them down for you. Do you want to do it? You going to come up?
I didn't want to come up without you telling me.
Pardon me?
I didn't want to come up without you.
No, I needed to write your name. I need your name and where you're from.
Sure. I'm Anthony Sulpizio. I'm from...
Sorry, Anthony, I'm sorry.
Sulpizio. S-U-L-P-I-Z-I-O.
S-U-L-P-I...
Z-I-O.
Sorry, I have competition. Where are you from, sir?
Bath.
Thank you.
Okay. Pennsylvania Department of Health, 41521. Failed health inspection, twice-bodged abortion, emergency and life-threatening situation. Allentown Women's Center. 9/7/22. Sanitary condition issues, failed health inspection, high-level disinfection not used on transvaginal ultrasound probes. 9/21/23. Using unauthorized anesthetic-containing ketamine. Excuse me. Keto mine. K-E-T-O-M-I-N-A. Okay. This is the kind of... This is the kind of business that you would like to protect. The council has no problem that needs solving. All the areas around Pennsylvania, around Northampton County, around Easton are pro-abortion, and there's plenty of access to it. I believe that this is an appeal to your base coming up with the election, and I urge you to follow the mercy and justice logos on your Northampton County Council emblem up there and have mercy and justice for these unborn children. Again, what you're trying to protect is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor?
Hi. Can I? My name is Debbie Burns.
Hold on. Debbie Burns?
Yes, Burns.
Spell it for me, please.
B-R-U-N-S.
And where are you from, Debbie?
I'm from...
City?
Amayus.
Thank you.
Well, I actually really don't have a speech. Actually, listening to, when I walked in, I'd also like to congratulate whoever was retiring and just to leave you with this thought. I hope someday we stop killing the most vulnerable, is the unborn baby, because maybe that child would have grown up, had a life, and we'd be celebrating that child's life the way we celebrate you tonight. So before you vote any other way, think of the one who is voiceless, who can't scream, "Please don't kill me." Murder is legal. Illegal. You put people in prison for murder, but they've lived a life, committed a crime. They deserve that. The unborn didn't do anything. They are a gift from God, and we're killing generations, not just one baby. We're wiping that baby's children and their children and on and on and on. So every baby that we've already killed, billions throughout the world, we're killing generations for each baby killed in the womb. So please, vote no, and think of that child, that innocent baby at conception. Life begins at conception, and who knows what that baby may grow up to be? It may change the world. We won't know because they didn't have a chance to live. So please, I beg you, reconsider and say no to killing the unborn. Thank you.
Thank you.
All of you. And congratulations.
And is there anybody else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor? I also want to say that we do have a lot of county business tonight, so if we could keep it brief, very brief. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a little short, so...
You need to say who you are and where you're from.
Tammy Fuller, Forks Township.
Thank you.
Good evening. I live in Forks Township, and as a proud citizen of Northampton County and a mother of two young women, I proudly stand here tonight in complete support of the right to choose sanctuary declaration. Let me tell you why. It is crucial to uphold the right to abortion, not only for the sake of women's bodily autonomy, but also to respect everyone's individual freedoms of religion. I am a Christian, but I firmly believe that no one religious group can dictate the choices of others who may hold different beliefs. Each and every one of us deserves the freedom to make decisions about our own bodies without fear of judgment or interference based on someone else's religious convictions. Recent events in our country, like the Dobbs versus Jackson decision, underscored this urgency of protecting this fundamental right. We need to ensure that all individuals have equitable access to reproductive health care. This is health care. Now, as I said, I have two daughters. One is at college in Indiana. My other daughter just began her internship down in Florida. Both of them are in states that have either made abortions illegal or have created drastic limitations. This has, as a result, led many health care providers to leave the states or stop practicing in these areas. These subsequent effects of these abortion bans are impacting the overall health care of all women across these states. Now, I have been very proud to be a Pennsylvanian for 24 years now. Passing this resolution will ensure a safe and accepting space where women can receive the care that they need and the care that they deserve. So I strongly urge you to please consider what this resolution means for everyone in this county and others, and to please vote in favor of it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. State your name and where you're from.
My name is Lori Jackson. I'm from Forks Township. I'm here also to speak about the pro-choice sanctuary resolution. Decades ago, particularly before Roe v. Wade, women suffered through horrifying back-alley abortions and other dangerous methods, often not surviving. No woman has an abortion for fun. There are so many factors that go into these decisions, not just financial factors, but also medical factors, both physical and mental. It's a very difficult and a very personal decision. This is about the right to privacy and the right to reproductive and health care control. So please don't send us back to the alley. Instead, protect each woman's right to decide what health care choices are best for them and pass the resolution to make Northampton County a pro-choice sanctuary county.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to?
Yay! Hi. I'm Annelle DiSanto, A-N-N-E-L-L-E-D-I-S-A-N-T-O, and I'm from Wilsonboro. Yay! I don't have a speech either, and I thought maybe I would bring pictures of the fetus as it's developing, and I didn't think that was the way to go either. I just want to share a couple of personal experiences. And I was watching all of you as others were speaking, and I'm very, very impressed by your listening to all of us, and I thank you very, very much. Okay? A few years ago, I was working at Bonton. I taught school in the day, and I originally started at Hess's in the holiday time, and I worked there on weekends and holidays. And it was actually Bonton. It had changed from Hess's to Bonton. And my daughter was 20 at the time, and she came into where I was working, and she said to me, she said, "Mom, I'm pregnant." The next thing that came out of my mouth was, "Well, you can get an abortion." I am so pro-life. I do not know where that came from, and my daughter did not. My granddaughter is 28 years old, and when I look at her, I think you were given a chance to live. And I'd like to ask each one of you rhetorically, what if your mother aborted you? Would you have wanted that right now going through life? Would you have wanted to be aborted? You didn't have a right to say no, yes, whatever. What would you do? I would not have wanted, even though we all go through hard times, we go through terrible, terrible situations, and yet I would not have wanted my mother to abort me. The other gentleman said that there are counties all around us that can have pro... or that can... you can go there to be aborted, and so why does Northampton County feel that they have to keep up with everybody else? I would ask you to take a stand, and with the things that have presented tonight, I don't think I'd want to be in any one of your shoes to have to make the decisions that you, as a council, have to make. And I want you to know that you will all be in my prayers, because it's not an easy task as to what you're doing. And... But I would really ask you to search your hearts and do what I believe is the right thing. Preserve, by the way. All those babies never had a chance to learn to read. They don't have a chance to learn to write. They don't have a chance to play on the playground, make friends, grow up and have children. They are not given that opportunity. And isn't that what America's about? The land of opportunity? Please, 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 think about it. I thank you. I thank you for listening, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello, council. I'm glad to be here tonight to share my right to speak.
What's your name, ma'am?
My name is Carol Lemon, L-E-M-O-N. I live in Easton Forks Township. I respectfully address each and every one of you to stop the proposal of Northampton County as an abortion sanctuary. Follow the money. What agenda is pushing this that no one wants? We, the taxpayer, do not want our tax money to provide abortion facilities in Northampton County. Demand that abortion not be made permissible in Northampton County. Life begins at conception, and abortion not only kills a budding, growing human life, but it also causes great physical, emotional, and mental, spiritual distress and suffering. And other health problems result, such as suicide, infertility, hemorrhage, marriages dissolve, families break up. Protect and preserve human life from conception to natural death. We do not want, and we beg of you, do not pass the resolution for Northampton County to be a sanctuary for abortion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Name and where you're from?
Good evening. My name is Neil Griffin, and I'm from Chicago, Illinois. I'm here to talk about the Dixie Project, and I'm joined by my colleague Claudia Robinson, who unfortunately could not make it. She is virtual.
Do you want to wait till we have the public hearing on this? If you don't, you're going to get a whole lot of time during the public hearing.
This was an opportunity for Claudia to speak. So Claudia, what do you think?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Would you like to speak now or wait for the public hearing portion?
I understand.
I think we can say we like the opportunity to speak tonight.
So we'll have the opportunity to speak in a few minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. I appreciate that.
Good evening. My name is Mary Bem. I'm from Bethlehem.
Spell your last name, please.
It is B-E-M. I'm here to speak also about the Northampton County being proposed as a sanctuary city and presenting opposition to that. I am a nurse, a bioethicist, currently studying to become a nurse practitioner. I urge each and every one of you to seriously consider all of the innocent lives at risk here that are every day at risk and dying before us. We each, as human beings, possess dignity that is innate, and it is through that dignity from which respect derives. We speak of respect in so many different ways, as we've respected those men and women who have gone before us in the fight for our country, as we should. And we should stand for these innocent lives who cannot speak for themselves. I'm here to speak on behalf of them as well as fellow friends here. As a nurse, it is my duty and my passion to care for those and to provide dignified care. And it is through that not to destroy life. Abortion is the termination of a life, and a sanctuary is a safe haven. How can we say that we are creating a safe haven for termination of life? It does not exist. They cannot coexist. We cannot disrespect life in that way and cause death. Infants can live or can live outside the womb at 24 weeks. Some cases, it is before that, and with technological advancements, it might even be sooner. We don't know. And you think about those little lives in a neonatal intensive care unit who are on life support, fighting for that life, fighting, and their parents, you know, fortunately, if they can be there to help them. Say, for instance, there is a little boy or girl there, 24 weeks old. Would you go and take scissors and cut and kill that baby? That is what happens with abortion. That is how many are terminated. That is how many are terminated. Is it right to say, just because we can see that life in front of us, that it's all of a sudden not okay? Do we believe that murders happen even though we weren't there to see it physically? They do. Those murders happen within the womb. We should be providing that care to the mothers, to those vulnerable young women, and the women at any age that become pregnant. In any scenario, they need that mental, they need that emotional support, they need that physical support. And we are failing in healthcare if we cannot provide those most basic needs. It is an injustice of care. So I ask you all to please consider these lives before us, that just because we cannot see it does not mean that life is not there. If a man, you know, had lost a limb, a veteran, just because they may not look exactly like us or have another deformity, does that mean they are not a person? Absolutely not. We respect life for the dignity for which it possesses, no matter how small that life may be, no matter if we can physically see it. Some individuals do not lose their sight. That does not mean they don't believe anything. You know, so please, I just urge you, and I thank you for your time and your consideration here. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of floor at this time?
Hi.
Name?
Mark Bogunovic, B-O-G-U-N-O-V-I-C-H.
B-O-G, sorry.
That's right. U-N-O-V-I-C-H.
I should know how to do that. Where are you from, sir?
I'm from Bethlehem.
Thank you.
First of all, I don't know if any of you have ever seen what a 10-week-old baby looks like. Can I show you?
I'm not interested. Thank you. You can pass it down.
All the organs are in place.
At 10 weeks, all the organs are in place, and the heart is beating. I ask you, does that look like a blob of tissue? You can't look at it because you are probably pro-abortion.
Sir.
I'm not saying you are.
You don't get the right to speak, you don't get the right to judge.
I'm not judging. Why else would, okay, well, maybe then you're horrified about abortion. That's right. Maybe that's the other reason that it could be. Could you pass it down, please? Okay, I'll get it.
Sir, finish your talk, okay?
I want them to see it.
Okay, somebody else can pass it. I'm not touching it. You have the right to speak. I'm not passing props, okay? Please. We've been here for an hour. We have county business. You absolutely have the right to speak, but please move on. Please make your point. I think we've all heard what everybody has to say.
They don't want to see it.
Some of us don't want to see it. So you have to respect our right to listen and try to hear you, okay?
It's a baby. It's not a blob of tissue. People get ultrasounds, and nowadays, they frame them, like my daughter did for her child, so that she has another photo of the child, preborn and after birth. One of the things that people, when they talk to me about abortion that are pro-abortion, they say, "My body, my choice." I never heard one of them say, "What about the baby's choice?" And some of those babies that are killed are women. So it's not, you know, it's not just, it's a woman's issue, but they're not protecting the women. I beg you, please, make the right choice. Thank you.
No. Is there anybody else who wants to speak to the floor? Thank you. Mr. McClure, do you have a report this evening?
I'll try and keep it short.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I know you have a lot of work to do tonight. We received numerous communications from Mr. Spadoni. I think I counted like six. We replied twice. It was, and I spoke with him here, adjacent to the dais, about the issue of the DA's referendum. And Mr. Camini is here, I believe, with us tonight to explain what has happened with the referendum with respect to the district attorney, and he is going to explain the action that the Elections Commission has taken. My view is the same as Mr. Spadoni's, that it must go on the ballot this year absent an additional action of council, potentially a resolution, leaving elections of the burden of placing it on the ballot this year. And Mr. Camini will explain to you what happened, why, and ask you about passing that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McClure.
Hi, good evening. Mr. McClure, thank you for receiving some of your time, council. Hi, Linda, congratulations and good luck. So just a few things. Been, myself, for those who do or do not know, over 30 years in the private sector. My first foray into the public sector, you know, continue to pour myself into the election space here to continue to provide free, fair, legal, and accurate elections for the county of Northampton. But there is, of course, some learning curve in that regard and a little bit of lack of understanding. So while we have had every intention of coming to council with this issue, I kind of put the cart before the horse and talked to the commission first. So tonight, I'm here to present this resolution that we want to introduce, that possibly, understanding that come November, this is probably the most consequential election that we're ever going to see. And with regards to 2023, we had the human error, and in 2019, of course, before my time, there was another error, and these errors seem to focus around when we add a question to the ballot. We really haven't had any issues with candidates on the ballot. It's always been that particular question. So what we would like to propose is that in order to provide an election that we can say that is going to be complete and no issues behind it, we would ask that if we could remove this particular referendum question to the municipal election in 2025.
Mr. Griffrade.
Is there any issues logistically having this on the November election?
No.
Can it be put on the ballot? Is there any problems logistically why this could not be?
Logistically, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Why would we be doing this? Council already took a legal action. We have the responsibility and authority.
We have the responsibility and the authority to do this. We've directed that this be put on. So, I mean, this is this continuation of, well, who cares if council set it? With the governing body of the county, why do we even have to pass anything else? They should put it on. It should be put on. If the commission doesn't like it, they can resign. I mean, at the end of the day, I don't quite understand why we have to take further action on something that we lawfully and legally passed.
Sure. And I mean, I'm not putting this on the commission. I'm putting this on my office to ensure that we can provide this a complete election without having to worry about another human error issue on a question. And I'm not disputing the fact that this has been passed through council. It's just a request from our office if we can move it.
Mr. Griffrade.
One more. You know, if we have this hard of a time to get a machine to answer a simple yes or no question, we need to seriously be considering why we're using the machines. We passed an ordinance, which is now law. It needs to be on that, and that's it. And if you can't get it done, we're going to have to continue to find people that can do it. I don't know why this is being brought to us. I have no idea. This seems ridiculous.
I have a concern that it was, it's not being put on. I think that your office has done a very nice job of making the corrections from last year. I attended your meetings when I could. I see no reason why we can't, if we are using the guidance that was given to us by the state, because my understanding when I spoke with them is that there might be some corrections in how we use the language that would make this less of a problem that we've had in the past. Have you been in touch with the State Department about, as this needs to be on this year, what they could do to help us support and make sure that the coding is done properly so that we could avoid that problem?
Now, we have put, we have put stuff in our office in place with the company to alleviate that issue. So this is nothing to do with the Department of State. This is completely information that we've trained on and stuff that we've set up the machine with the training that we provide our LNA workers to make sure that this works.
And ESNS, are you working with them, and they assured you that you can do this, and we don't have to have an air?
Yes, yes. I mean, we had, you know, we upgraded the testing for last year as well, for the previous election back in April. So we're confident it'll work. We just made a request. If the request is going to be denied, that's okay.
Mr. Giovanni.
I don't see how it can be denied. It's an ordinance. We passed it. It's law, county law.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm trying not, and I'm trying to also understand it. I mean, we're just going to move it. We don't want to remove it, but again, it's your decision.
I think our decision was made.
That's okay.
The problem with our decision is that we wanted it on before, but we were delayed. And so, because when I proposed it, I, Mr. Cusick's not here, but we were a few weeks behind, so we couldn't get it on with the other ones.
Sure.
I think it needs to go on this year. I, again, I really hope that this is not the thing that would create a problem. And I think, again, you're working very hard. So if there's other resources that you need from us to ensure that this happens and that the machines are working appropriately, or extra support for ESNS, then that's what I'm looking for, not to delay it, because then we just keep pushing the problem down the road.
Okay.
And I understand that everyone's worried about, you know, personalities notwithstanding and not talking about yours, but the big names at the top and everything else. But this is our business, and this is our job.
We will make it work.
We want to support you all in doing your job.
We'll make it work.
And one last thing, because I don't want to put this on your lap, but I get infuriated when I hear about the capabilities and incapabilities of these machines, but we need to have confidence that we can do this right. And I'm sorry, but this is going to be a very well-attended election.
There's no need to apologize, Mr. Griffrade.
Democratic response to a question that is important, so it should be a priority for this administration to have this on there. So I hope you rest everybody's minds at ease and say, "Yeah, we'll have no problem answering a yes or no question with these sophisticated, expensive machines."
There was a request, and it's okay.
And if, when we have our election meeting, I think it's happening on the 18th. My whole month is screwed up. So I think if you need to bring ESNS in or somebody from the state to talk to us about how we can do this more efficiently, happy to hear that.
Now, we are confident that once, when the question goes on the ballot, it will work.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Request sidebar. Is there any way you could have ESNS come to the next election integrity or the following, whichever one works best for them?
I can certainly ask. If I can get a date in advance, enough advance notice, then I can certainly ask.
Are we the 18th? Are we on the Tuesday evening, the 18th?
Tuesday.
We're going to do it right after finance. Yeah, because we can't have it on the 19th. I didn't realize that one.
That's June.
It's in the calendar.
June 18th.
Right, June.
Okay.
It's a Tuesday. It's going to be weird.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your time. I do appreciate it. Yep, sure.
And thank you, Mr. McClure, for your support of that.
I don't want to run away if there are any questions. Are there any questions?
Peg's running away. No.
I'm giving her cover to get out. Peg spent enough time here.
Questions for Mr. McClure? Thank you, sir. I'm sure we have more in the next. Does anyone need a recess for five minutes before we do the next public comment? I'd like to take five. Five-minute recess. Thank you.
Sorry, guys.
I'm going to run. Don't worry.
I had a psychotherapist walking in. Lock him out, and it's like, I can hear them, but not all are destroyed.
There might be a call that goes to Anthony on that. But we'll have to see. I'm not sure. So we had Lenny Dietrich do the evaluation from Dietrich Group. She's the one who did the math works and answers. And then she did the professionalized assessment on, which was particular to me. She's like...
Hi, Ron, how are you?
I was on here.
Hey.
What's up?
For what?
That's my medical bills for the first five months of this year.
A brain transplant, finally?
Right there. That's for the first five months.
Oh, bless you. Hey.
Can you fucking believe that?
Lifetime cap. So is the new brain working?
I'm just sitting here. This is your duty, or should you do this for this council?
You will do with the state legislature.
This is my first time on the side. This is my first time attending a meeting.
I need baby, please.
I agree right now. I have to deal with the board.
I need, I need a...
That's why I got that cigar. See?
How are you, Ron?
See, and I don't hold rockets.
No, you're white. We had some again, the high...
Because I know it's helping them.
I think it's my first time.
So I have to work.
Oh, all right. I'll tell him. He's looking for a ride.
My wife's here?
Well, my wife gets me all the time. We're going to buy, we're going to check with her. We're going to buy this. You can't do all the things you do. And then she says to me the other day, "I'll go to the next one." I said, "What, where are you going to go?"
Let's get back to business. Thank you for allowing us that time. Thank you. Will the staff sit down, please?
Order in the court. Order in the court. Here comes the judge.
This evening, we have, under old business, a public hearing of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance by the Northampton County Council concurring and agreeing with the Borough of Wilson and the Wilson Area School District to participate in a proposed tax increment financing district, to be known as the 1921 at Dixie Avenue Tax Increment Financing District. It looks like it was double. In accordance with the powers conferred upon municipalities by Act 113 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as amended, Mr. Gafredo and Capora introduced this ordinance at the May 2nd meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public?
There we go.
State your name and where you're from.
Good evening. I'm Stan Margul. I'm the solicitor for Wilson Borough. Point of correction, the wording of the matter on your agenda indicates an agreement with Wilson Borough and the Wilson Area School District. We have not formally acted upon the TIF as of yet. I'm not saying we support it or don't support it. Couple of weeks ago, when I was here, I didn't know much about it. I've now read it to death, and I know a lot about it. I can tell you that Nat Hyman's wrong. The developer's not getting $29 million out of that act if you pass it. If I had to render an opinion right now, I preliminarily would support it, because I think it promotes development. I think it is a, it is not a tax break. It is not a tax favor to the developer. It's an incentive, of course, but it's not a tax break or money in his pocket. That having been said, that's not why I'm speaking. Wilson Borough has, I've been solicitor for 10 years, and that building's been empty for 40 years. This is a real developer. He is placing a lot of his personal money in it. I've reviewed every aspect of this 405 unit project. It is going to be a monument to not only Wilson Borough, but also Northampton County. When you come into Wilson Borough, that's the first thing you're going to see, and it's going to be something else. The TIF is something, of course, that would incentivize any developer, and for that reason, I would give my, I would lean toward that. But we have not acted upon that yet, and to my knowledge, the school district has not either. But we and my council, Borough Council, fully support this application. The benefits irrespective of the TIF, the benefits to the Borough, the county, and everywhere else nearby. We have the business privilege tax. We have the EIT. We have the general economic impact of a large number of new residents coming to the area. We've examined this. We've looked at it, and we think it's going to be a great thing. We ask you to continue to support it. We know, at least we think, we know that you guys support it. And the TIF is something that I'm, it's too early for me to render a legal opinion on that, but I will be doing that shortly for the Borough. I wanted you to be aware that we have not formally acted upon that yet, but I'm, if I had to tell you right now, I think we would probably support it.
Sir, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you represent the Borough only.
I'm the lawyer for the Borough.
What is your timeline on discussing this matter?
We'll be doing that either at Monday's meeting or the two weeks from Monday. It's going to be before the end of the month. I imagine we'll preliminarily discuss it on Monday. They won't be prepared to vote on it. I've got to advertise that, and we've got to advertise it like you do for a public hearing. So probably the last meeting in June or first meeting in July. It's going to be quick.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Margul, you stated that Nat Hyman's claim that they would get $29 million of TIF money and potentially $10 million in R cap money is incorrect.
It is.
Accurate figure?
Absolutely incorrect.
Do you know what that figure would be? Because I asked that question a couple of times, and nobody can give me an answer as to, at least an approximation as what they plan to build, what the tax benefit over the life of the TIF would be.
I can't speak to that. I'm not, I'm not.
How can you be so sure that they, Mr. Hyman's wrong? Because in his experience, he's done over these projects. Seems like he has a pretty good base of reference.
Because I've looked at the benefits that the TIF provides to a developer, and it's not any upfront money or any long money going over the 20 years. It is a, in essence, it is a deferral of taxes for a period of time. And in that essence, he does not have to spend that money. But to the extent that Mr. Hyman says that that, in essence, you're putting money in his pocket, it's actually the reverse. He's not having, the developer's not having to expend that money upfront.
Well, essentially, he'd be building something that would be 20-fold, maybe 100-fold what they're currently paying in taxes. Currently, they'd just keep paying the tax that they're paying now for that 20 years.
They would be paying the taxes.
It'll be the Borough and the school district and the county would be basically not able to realize what the taxes would be for the project for the full term of that 20 years. Is that true?
That's correct.
The next question is.
That's correct.
Why the 20-year term? That's pretty irregular.
We don't like that.
Okay. And then who wrote this?
Could you say that again, sir?
I said, one of the things that we don't like about the TIF is the extent of it. We would, I think we would support a 10-year TIF.
And then who wrote the TIF?
We did not. I believe that it was written by a consultant hired by, I don't know who. I can't say for specifically.
Thank you very much.
Sure. I have read it, and I don't have the brain power to write that thing, so it was not written by us. But if I could, that, it's more the incentive to the developer, because there's so few companies and investors and developers who have the ability to do something like this. This is, one thing that Mr. Hyman said was correct, is well over $100 million. And you're not going to get a lot of people coming here and spend that in Wilson Borough. And we've got to get that building. It's been 40 years vacant. We've got to get it. This is an opportunity. We can't, we can't let it pass.
Did you say four years vacant or 40 years?
Forty, ma'am, 40. If it was four years, I wouldn't be here complaining about it.
You know, Mike, it's been a long night. All right. And, sorry, any other questions?
I'd be happy to answer any questions now or later.
So you say you might not hear it until the end of June, or you won't be able to vote on it until the end of June?
We won't be able to vote for it until at least the end of June, probably the first meeting in July. I intend to bring it up and speak about it on Monday night at our meeting. We meet every, every other Monday.
Thank you.
I imagine, I imagine it's going to be passed or acted on sometime, no later than early July.
Is Mr. Hyman still here?
No.
I believe he is.
I could potentially ask him a question. I mean, came in pretty bombastic about this project, seeming as though he wanted to somehow destroy the progress that's been made at this point. I want to ask a couple of questions.
If you want to know why his $7 million, if you want to know why his $7 million offer was rejected, it's because the product he proposed was substandard. That's why it was rejected.
And that was essentially one of the questions.
The essential quality, the quality of the development that he was going to put up, the quality of the building.
As well as the labor that would be used.
Absolutely.
For the actual project itself, too, which I think is pretty important.
That's correct.
But he's not here.
He left right after his speech.
There's a lot of folks here. And I want to be clear. I have never, I met Mr. Hyman for the first time tonight. Of course, I've known who he is in terms of development projects that he's done throughout the Lehigh Valley, reading about him and various projects.
He does good things. He does.
Throughout the news. But this is the first time I've ever met him. Is he a Northampton County resident?
No, he's, I believe he's in Allentown.
Okay.
But he does, I want to say, he does good things, but it would not be appropriate for this building in this place. It would not.
It appears as though, just from what I saw earlier with regard to his statement, which I read as well, that he is somehow intent on destroying this project for some reason.
He wants the building.
And it's a project, or I should say, a building that's been vacant for 40 years. It is a public safety hazard.
Yes, it is.
At this point.
And we have enforced our codes, by the way. I heard him say that toward the end, that you need to enforce the building code. We have. There's nobody in that building. Therefore, it is no longer a hazard. It's a, perhaps an attractive nuisance to children, but we've got police on that. We're looking at it. We have enforced those code laws. And I've written the citations to do that.
I wanted to ask him about some labor, but I'm not going to have a chance to, so.
Well, I mean, no, you want to ask him a question?
No, no, Mr. Hyman. I was going to.
Well, he's gone. I mean, I think we have to move on from that. I mean, he said his piece, and he left. That's fine. Mr. Heckman.
Sure. You just said, you answered part of the question. So the Borough has been issuing code violations on Mr. Hyman?
Yes, we have.
And has he, what did he do when you issued those? Did he?
Paid the fine.
What's that?
He paid the fine.
Can I ask how much the fine is?
$300.
Do you know a pro?
A citation.
Okay. How many citations over this time? Are you aware of maybe?
10 or 15.
Do you represent him also?
No, I do not.
So you're, I'm, I think I'm not hearing anything. You said he was fined and he only paid $300?
That's, that's the law. That's our ordinance.
Her citation.
Yeah. That's, ma'am, that's, madam, that's.
I'm sorry. I was just.
Oh, no, no, no.
That's the maximum under our ordinance. Up to $300.
Yeah. And you could help me with this also, if you'd just give me a second. All right. So he has been fined codes, and he's paid.
He has.
Has he been paying his taxes?
I don't do that.
Okay. Because my understanding was, he has been delinquent, and this developer was saying, oh, I didn't have to, but I'm paying his taxes.
That's what, I heard that, too.
As a solicitor.
I don't know that.
You would say whoever's involved in this, somebody better pay them damn taxes.
I know that there is a closing, a settlement coming up, and at settle, real estate closings, you cannot convey legal title unless all the taxes are paid current.
Okay, okay.
So if they're not paid now, they're going to be shortly.
Okay. I mean, honestly, and you've expressed this, I just, I'm glad you were doing the best you could, but I don't know how, like, if I did this with my house, I'd have the Bethlehem code, that'd be out on the street. How Reedman could get away with this for so long is beyond me.
It's the thing that there's no one occupying it, so the danger and the risk is not as significant as if it were occupied.
But what if a kid went up on the third floor?
There did. We have, we've had that.
And they fell out of a window.
It'd be a problem. We've had that. We've been monitoring it very carefully. There hasn't, not one where there has not been a problem.
You can't, you know, you can't stop that. I get that. I just, I mean, I just think this man was able to get, and I know you're bound like we are with your codes and law, but I, it just amazes me how long he could get away with this.
We are happy to have him sell the building to another entity. That's as far as I'll go.
Well, it sounds like he got a pretty penny for that building, so I'm sure he'd be, he's happy.
He's happy to get rid of it. Mr. Hyman, to answer your question, I think you alluded to it. As I understand it, Mr. Hyman wants, I don't know if he wants the developer to fail, but he wants the deal to fall through so he can come in and buy it. There's no other person's interested, as far as I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Capora.
Mr. Brown.
John, how are you?
Mr. Margul, how are you?
Very good.
I just wanted to get clarity on your statement. You had mentioned that the Borough's going to undertake a conversation about the project, but they've not entertained or come to resolution around the TIF.
That's right.
Question of it. They're supportive of the project being redeveloped.
Yep.
The TIF portion, which is what's on our desk.
I know.
Here, asking to do it. You also mentioned that if the, were to, the conversation for the Borough around the TIF, they're not inclined to look at a 20-year. There'd probably be some terms you would work with your body.
If a lesser term were available, or that was an option, I think they would go with that.
So then, while the Madam President was looking at timing, it really comes down to whether the Borough can even come to an agreement around some of these terms that are not clear, specifically relating to the TIF, supported or not, and then what that is. So there'll be an internal negotiation amongst the members.
There will.
And that's what you're proposing, that they take the conversation up on Monday?
Right. That's right. And we have some questions of the developer on the necessity of the TIF and the, whether 20 years is really a term that is absolutely necessary. I don't know the answer to the question whether the TIF by all three municipalities or three governing bodies is something that is required by him and his people, or whether he's going to do the project without it. My understanding is he's going to do it without it. That's what I believe, but I don't know that for sure.
And as I understand the project as scoped, it's all with the reference to the million dollars, whatever the agreement, the administration.
The buyout of the affordable housing.
So they don't need to, it'll all be market rate type units at this point. So, okay. Thank you. I just wanted clarity. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Follow-up question. I was reading, and I don't know if I heard correctly, did you say that regardless of the TIF, they're probably still going to follow through with the project?
I don't know that. I don't represent him. My feeling is that.
Probably over there sitting like, stop, because poker hands are going to be needed, or we won't do it.
I can't say for sure.
I just want to, you know, and I'm going to wait for the public hearing, but yeah, I wouldn't say that too loudly.
Can I say that, can I tell you why I have come to that conclusion? Because in my many, many discussions with Brian, the head of the development team, he has not talked about the TIF to me once. He's talked about the development, what he's going to do for the building, what he's going to do for the Borough, what he's going to do for the area. He's not mentioned the TIF to me once.
Well, and Mr. Solicitor, just to follow up, you know, I don't know how much the development team knows about Wilson Borough, but Wilson Borough is in a pretty dire situation, just geographically, economically.
This would be big.
I think, you know, if anybody needs to be giving money, it's the other way around. I don't think Wilson, and we talked to the mayor, so it's like, we're the lowest stakeholder in this deal, being the lowest tax, but.
You are.
And I don't want to dictate the terms to Wilson Borough, but at the end of the day, we are the county. We're the governing body of the county, and I think it's bad business to be giving tax breaks to equity funds. They got more money than we can imagine.
Right.
We're going to give them taxpayer money to do a for-profit luxury apartments.
However, I have looked at and intend to advise the Borough that the money that will be made from the earned income tax, from the business privilege tax, from the licensing fees, will greatly outweigh any loss or any deferral of tax.
No doubt. The economic impact of that development.
Be tremendous.
Huge for Wilson. And that's why we don't want to scare anybody away, and we don't want you here. But at the same time, you can't, first of all, nobody could tell me how much the amount is. So we're kind of doing guerrilla math here, saying, well, it's going to be great. Well, we're not going to tell you how much it's going to cost.
Right.
We need to know that number. And then the second thing is, if they're going to do it anyway, which I think somebody's eventually, it's a big country. A lot of people have a lot of money. Somebody will do something eventually. The opportunity, maybe not for 12 million, maybe not for 10 million, but eventually, the price will be right. Something's going to have to change.
We, we don't.
We need to give them tens of millions of dollars to do so.
We don't want to wait. We want this project done now. And as you folks may be aware, this developer has done over a million dollars worth of remediation, of money out of his own pocket. The barrels that were underground, there were five of them. The DEP had to come in and inspect that. That was $500,000 or $600,000 out of pocket. The asbestos that had to be remediated and the lead-based paint remediated out of pocket. So this is a serious, committed developer.
And that's fantastic. And if I'm sitting here playing poker against a guy, I got to think whether or not he's going to go in, whether or not he gets a TIF. Maybe he's committed. Maybe he's invested in it. And that's great, because if he believes in the project, he should be able to believe in it without a subsidy, in my personal opinion.
In theory.
Well, I'm going to wait to hear more. I don't have a, you know, I even said to the mayor, we're undecided up here. We want to listen, but that's kind of where we stand.
We're happy that you guys are so interested in this. It's very important to the Borough. And the mayor is here, by the way.
Yeah, we talked.
Anything else?
Just a follow-up with you.
Sure.
I was, I'm on the Bethlehem Redevelopment Authority, and I was there when the sands came in.
Right.
We did the TIF. The redevelopment authority had the TIF. And what I'm going to get from the company is, and my understanding of the TIF is, there's a lot of things that go with that TIF, and sort of labor you use.
Yep.
And other things that you better abide by, or the state will come in and lead into that.
The penalties are severe.
The penalties are severe. You're correct. Now, I'm going to have to check with the developer, because in a TIF, you put, the taxes that you pay are put into the TIF fund.
It's, it's, there's an authority that's created by the TIF, yeah.
Yes, authority. We have the GPA, and, but there is an authority, absolutely. Now, for example, the sands, all the money that was put into that TIF went to, you wouldn't have the Lovett Pavilion, the Hoover Mason Trust. All of that was given to the Redevelopment Authority to enhance the community. So South Side is what it is down there because of sands, whether you love them or hate them. And I thought, I always thought Shel Adelson was a pretty shrewd businessman, so.
That's why he's a multi-billionaire.
Well, now, he isn't. So I got to find out, because my understanding from this group is, they want to use the TIF money as the, to invest in the building to redevelop it. And to me, it's like, well, other than fixing a building that's in Wilson, what are you doing for the commu?
That's not the way I understand it.
Well, all right, and that's fine, because that, these are the questions I think we have.
Good question.
There's a bum's rush to get this thing through. And I think that's why we all are sort of like saying, let's put the brakes on for a second. And I know you have to talk to your people, so.
I was involved with the TIF with Charlie Shrin and Route 33.
Yeah. And you're right, the TIFs, you got to be careful.
he has not talked about the TIF to me once. He's talked about the development, what he's going to do for the building, what he's going to do for the borough, what he's going to do for the area, he's not mentioned the TIF to me once.
Well, and Mr. Solicitor, just to follow up, you know, I don't know how much the development team knows about Wilson Borough, but Wilson Borough is in a pretty dire situation, just geographically, economically.
This would be big.
I think, you know, if anybody needs to be giving money, it's the other way around. I don't think Wilson, and we talked to the mayor, so it's like, we're the lowest stakeholder in this deal, being the lowest tax, but.
You are.
And I don't want to dictate the terms to Wilson Borough, but at the end of the day, we are the county, we're the governing body of the county, and I think it's bad business to be giving tax breaks to equity funds. They got more money than we can imagine.
Right.
We're going to give them taxpayer money to do a for-profit luxury apartments.
However, I have looked at and intend to advise the borough that the money that will be made from the earned income tax, from the business privilege tax, from the licensing fees, will greatly outweigh any loss or any deferral of tax.
Economic impact of that development.
Be tremendous.
Huge for Wilson, and that's why we don't want to scare anybody away, and we don't want you here. But at the same time, you can't, first of all, nobody can tell me how much the amount is. So we're kind of doing guerrilla math here, saying, well, it's going to be great, well, we're not going to tell you how much it's going to cost.
Right.
We need to know that number. And then the second thing is, if they're going to do it anyway, which I think somebody's eventually, it's a big country, a lot of people have a lot of money, somebody will do something eventually. The opportunity, maybe not for twelve million, maybe not for ten million, but eventually, the price will be right, something's going to have to change.
We, we don't.
Give them tens of millions of dollars to do so.
We don't want to wait, we, we want this project done now, and as you folks may be aware, this developer has done over a million dollars worth of remediation, of money out of his own pocket. The barrels that were underground, there were five of them, the DEP had to come in and inspect that, that was five or six hundred thousand dollars out of pocket. The asbestos that had to be remediated and the lead-based paint remediated out of pocket. So this is a serious, committed developer.
And that's fantastic, and if I'm sitting here playing poker against a guy, I got to think whether or not he's going to go in, whether or not he gets a TIF, maybe he's committed, maybe he's invested in it, and that's great, because if he believes in the project, he should be able to believe in it without a subsidy, in my personal opinion.
In theory.
Well, I'm going to wait to hear more, I don't have a dis, you know, I've even said to the mayor, we're undecided up here, we want to listen, but that's kind of where we stand.
We're happy that you guys are so interested in this, it's very important to the borough, and the mayor is here, by the way. Anything else?
Just a follow-up with you.
Sure.
I'm on the Bethlehem Redevelopment Authority, and I was there when the sands came in.
Right.
We did the TIF, the redevelopment authority had the TIF. And what I'm going to get from the company is, and my understanding of a TIF is, there's a lot of things that go with that TIF, and sort of labor you use.
Yep.
And other things that you better abide by, or the state will come in and add to that.
The penalties are severe.
The penalties are severe, you're correct. Now, I'm going to have to check with the developer, because in a TIF, you put, the taxes that you pay are put into the TIF fund.
It's, it's, there's an authority that's created by the TIF, yeah.
Authority, we have the GPA, and, but there is an authority, absolutely. Now, for example, the sands, all the money that was put into that TIF went to, you wouldn't have the Lovett Pavilion, the Hoover Mason Trust, all of that was given to the redevelopment authority to enhance the community. So South Side is what it is down there because of sands, whether you love them or hate them. And I thought, I always thought Shel Adelson was a pretty shrewd businessman, so.
That's why he's a multi-billionaire.
Well, now, he isn't, but, you know. So I got to find out, because my understanding from this group is, they want to use the TIF money as the, to invest in the building to redevelop it. And to me, it's like, well, other than fixing a building that's in Wilson, what are you doing for the commu?
That's not the way I understand it.
Well, all right, and that's fine, because that, these are the questions I think we have.
Good question.
There's a bum's rush to get this thing through, and I think that's why we all are sort of like saying, let's put the brakes on for a second. And I know you have to talk to your people, so.
I was involved with the TIF with Charlie Schriner, Route thirty-three.
And you're right, the TIFs, you got to be careful with it.
Yep.
You just have to be careful, but thank you, sir.
Sure.
Mr. Barrett, are you still here?
I'm here.
I would like to, Mr. Barrett, not Baron, I'm so sorry, I saw you. I would like to be able to call you up next, because you.
Am I excused?
Yeah, sure, you, we could call you back.
I haven't eaten dinner yet.
We didn't either. Okay, I just wanted to give you the opportunity, because you were on the list first and you deferred, so, and then, Mr. Griffin, I believe you were next, that was deferred.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to let everybody be aware, I just got notified that there may be some audible alarms go off, they're just testing the system.
Because that is exactly what we need tonight, thank you. Is there going to be a fire drill too, or can we?
Yeah, there you go.
Maybe tomorrow.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Very exciting.
Two thirty for Linda, so she could get an easy exit. Mr. Griffin, thank you, and thank you for your patience.
Well, thank you, my name's Neil Griffin, again, I'm the senior project manager for this project, representing CASM Architecture. Nathaniel Clark in the audience here owns CASM Architecture, and I'm joined by Claudia Robinson, who has many decades of experience working with tax credits and tax increment financing. And so I want to give her the floor and be able to share the progress on the project.
Thanks a whole lot, Neil, and, well, thank you to everyone, sorry that I'm not there in person. I have to say that, the first thing is, I never anticipated that the first line that I was going to have to do has to do with defending the group. The bottom line is, is that we've put a lot of time and a lot of effort in the development of this project, and I don't think it's worthwhile for me to sit there at this point and refute Mr. Hyman's comments and speech. What I would suggest is that we return with the Amerian Group, David, who came a couple of weeks ago, with Mr. Barti, and we present the project, because it was a very unfair speech that Mr. Hyman did. I can answer the questions in regards to the TIF. The TIF to the development really almost acts like a loan. The intent is that after the improvement of the project, and that we have this beautiful apartment complex, the taxes that will be generated will be a tenfold increase to what is being paid now.
Can I interrupt for a second, so, because we've heard this?
Sure.
Can I ask you three very succinct questions, and I just need simple answers. One, how much by your estimates do you guys project to save with the TIF?
The TIF, in terms of net to the project, would be approximately twenty-one million dollars.
Twenty-one million dollars, okay. Two, what are the authority that the TIF will have to store that money in? Or will that money be generated for, will it be used for?
The TIF is, like I said, sort of acts like a loan, so the funds are drawn down for the development, for the construction costs.
And then.
It is, go ahead.
She's with the equity firm, she's one of the managing partners, is that what?
No, she's a consultant.
Is it your understanding that the equity firm that is financing this project will go through with this project with or without the TIF?
No, that is not correct.
Okay, so is of your opinion that without this TIF, this project will?
It is, without this TIF, this project will not happen, because we will have a significant gap in the financing.
Thank you very much.
But I would like to have a better presentation, so that you can, we can dig deeper into the issues of the TIF, and also to understand how the TIF fits the community. Because at the end of the day, right now, Wilson Borough and the Wilson School District is receiving really no funds from this property that has been really dysfunctional for forty years. When we finish our construction, and we do have the experience, regardless of what Mr. Hyman has said, and we can show you the projects that we have worked on, this project will be not only generating the significant property taxes that repays the TIF and also provides a stream for the school district, the borough, and the county. But in addition, we did a lot of discussions with Wilson Borough, and we have also spoken to the school district. There's two things that are important. First of all, in terms of the borough, what we have heard is that this middle-income rents that we are charging, so that we're bringing young professionals and people who have decent earnings to the borough, will generate also additional taxes for the borough and for the school district. That is separate and apart from the property taxes that the improved properties would do. You know, Mr. Hyman has his own skeletons, and it's really not appropriate for me to start discussing them now, but I think this blind sighting that he did, it's fine in terms of, you can review it, we will meet with you, but we are very confident in terms of our project.
Madam, just to be.
Can I say something first?
This is the public ordinance, this is when this is supposed to come to the table, and, you know, Mr. Hyman, for all, you know, he did leave, but he was here at least.
The other concern I have is that, this, as you said, this is our public, this is our first chance to really ask questions, and with all due respect, I've heard two or three presentations on this so far. The first one I was at, I heard that County Council totally backs this, because you did a presentation at Economic Development before I saw you at the GPA. This is the first time this body in its full form is hearing this presentation, and we may ask for another one. So I think we have the right to ask the questions we want, and with all due respect to Mr. Hyman, he came, he left a note, he's not the point of reference here, we are. So it's our turn to ask questions and get the answers, and, you know, he had an opinion, but that's not what we're basing our questions on.
Oh, I totally agree, and I'm sorry, I totally agree that this is where we are. I just felt that it was necessary to address his opinion that he provided.
Mr. Heckman.
But yes, you are totally correct.
I don't want to get into a thing with the phone.
True.
It's difficult to do that, but I will say, I'm glad you said that they're going to come, the actual, I know you're a consultant for them, but the actual developer is going to show up here?
We were there two weeks ago, and we will be there again.
Well, I think that's important, this is a very big deal. The other thing is, one question you could probably answer right off the bat. It's been said that the twenty years wasn't necessary, that it could be a ten, which I think twenty years is crazy, but a ten-year TIF would be acceptable, is that true?
Typical TIFs are twenty years, but the reality of it is, is that they get paid off much faster. There is the, you have to understand, in terms of the bondholders, there is a debt service coverage that they require, but there is excess funds, and those excess funds have to go to repaying the bonds as quickly as possible. There are also reserves that are put into the bond structure. Those two are ultimately used to amortize the TIF bonds. The bottom line is, is that it's typically, it's going to be a fifteen-year, that the bonds are outstanding. Twenty is the term, but it's actually, is more often fifteen years.
Any other questions? You good? Heck of a job you had to do tonight.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
I had a letter that was sent for somebody who couldn't be here, and I forgot to read it at the beginning, but it's germane to this, so I'd like to enter it into the council record from Henry Hung regarding the redevelopment of the Dixie Cup Factory in Wilson Borough. In my absence from this meeting, the testimony may be read to the Northampton County Council. My name is Henry Hung, who's not here, I am a resident of the City of Easton, I'm writing this testimony to express my views regarding the proposed redevelopment of the Dixie Cup site. We can all assume that the economic impact of the redevelopment has the potential for job creation, increased property values, a boost to local businesses. It is vital, however, that these economic benefits are balanced with community needs and do not lead to gentrification or displacement of current residents. The project should reflect the community's needs and aspirations by developing affordable housing, creating more access points to the Wilson Bike Path from the site property, and opening up the site amenities to residents who live in the Wilson Borough. I would like to emphasize the importance of incorporating public opinion into the decision-making process regarding the planned amenities at the Dixie Cup site. I strongly urge the council to consider opening some of these amenities, not only to the residents of the Dixie Cup Building, but also to the, all residents of Easton. While it's understandable that certain amenities should be exclusive to the residents, others such as the rooftop lounge, fitness center, and pool could greatly benefit the broader community. Expanding access to these facilities will foster a sense of inclusivity and community integration. It will also enhance the quality of life for many residents and create a more vibrant interconnected Easton. I believe this approach will bring significant positive outcomes, including increased community engagement and a strengthened sense of unity. The redevelopment of the Dixie Cup site is a significant undertaking that requires careful planning and execution. By prioritizing community involvement, historical preservation, and economic development, we can transform the site into a vibrant, functional space that honors our past and looks forward to our future. I urge Northampton County Council to consider these factors as they deliberate on the project. Thank you for your attention and opportunity to provide my testimony. I'll give that to you so you could email it to everybody. Thank you, is there anybody else who wishes to speak, sir?
Hi, my name's Chuck Weiss, I'm the Associate Executive Director of Housing for Community Action Lehigh Valley in Bethlehem. I've been before you guys before for some of the programs we offered. I just thought I'd give you some insight on what the million dollars for low-income housing will buy you. Just bricks and mortar type of stuff, a million bucks will do you like forty roofs, or home repairs. It'll do you maybe four apartments if we buy a building and renovate it. And there's four hundred and some apartments going in here. So the, I'm just advocating for the fact that it'd be nice to see a little bit more money coming out of this for affordable housing. Just to give you some ideas, like what the county has done already in the past three years, we put two hundred roofs in Northampton County at CALV. That's a cost of about three million dollars you guys have invested, and the state, and some of our other funders that we brought in. But it's a partnership that we do with you guys, and I think the county has been very good with doing these home repair programs, lead programs. We have two million dollars we're working on right now for lead in the county, everything from lead pipes, lead water meters, to actually lead in homes. So just giving you a little food for thought on what you're getting for that, a million dollars, and they're getting four hundred units, you're getting a million dollars, and they want to give them a TIF. Eh, I don't know.
Sir, can I ask, did you have a figure in mind that you think would be more reasonable, given your experience and perspective regarding affordable housing?
I think they, generally speaking, the buyouts for affordable housing have been very attractive to builders, most builders take them. The idea that, to making those things a little bit, I mean, even another million dollars would be a bigger impact. If I had another million dollars, I could get eight units, eight units out of four hundred isn't so bad. I could, you know, we could develop eight units for the county for affordable housing. But I'm just saying that those are the kind of things that we want to take a look at here, you know? If they want to give me the money from the TIF, I can do a lot with twenty-one million.
And if you were greedy, how much would you see as a reasonable ask from this project? I mean, there's a lot of money that's been floated.
Yeah, I would, I would say, I mean, I, the county, you know, you guys have put, invested a lot of money in things, and it would be nice to see you get some money out of this. You know, a two to three million dollar investment is something I would see being great, you know, it'd be an impact comparable to the units in there. I was a private developer, I know what, you know, the units to the impact would be. And I think a two and a half million dollar would be a significant impact, it would actually represent more equally what you would get if they didn't buy it out. You know what I'm saying, over time? So, any other questions?
Mr. Moore, first, and then Mr. Heckman.
Thank you, thank you. It's my understanding that the 1.1 million that we continue to talk about is not going to go toward one specific project. And I think that's kind of where, it's going into the Affordable Housing Fund.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Whether we're going to be working on projects in the future in the borough of Glendon, or in Fork Township with Habitat for Humanity projects. I just want to be clear with folks in the public as well, that this is, this is going into a fund, it's not going to.
Oh, no, 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 it's not definitely going to us. No, I understand that, absolutely, I mean.
Quite frankly, the way you were presenting it a little bit made it seem as though just this 1.1 million was just going to go towards.
No, I'm just giving, trying to give you an idea of what it would pay for, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
I mean, we're, right now, we're currently working on the Glendon Hotel project, that's, that's a 1.8 million dollar project for five homes.
Yeah, it's five or seven, five homes?
Five homes, yeah.
I think it's good to have it, instead of none.
Well, I mean, absolutely, absolutely, and that's a, that's a project, nobody, doesn't work in the private sector due to the steep hill situations, and that's a lot of the cost in that 1.8 million, but we're able to do that and then sell them to affordable, for affordable rates. But I'm just trying to give you an idea of what, when you take this money and put it in the fund, generally, that will get spread out over the different nonprofits or agencies, and, but that's what it kind of will buy you, and just give you an idea, that's all.
Thank you, are you there?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sir, go ahead, I forgot.
I know. You're right, I mean, this million dollars is peanuts for this guy, it's almost an insult that he's saying, give me this, a TIF fund that'll fund the development, I'm going to benefit from, and I'll give you a million dollars. You know, we probably could put our heads together at the budget and get you a million dollars. I mean, we have the funding in the county to pull that off, so I'm not intrigued by his million dollars. The other thing is, though, since you're an expert in this field, I think it would be helpful, as we want to educate people, is that affordable housing is sometimes misconstrued as just subsidized housing. But subsidized housing is mentioned as affordable housing, but not all affordable housing is subsidized, for example, through Section Eight. And you get into that whole twenty, thirty percent of a household being, and then you can charge no more than twenty percent for the rent itself, is that?
In a Section Eight situation, that would be a.
But, but if, somebody's coming in, and they're not, they're not coming in on Section Eight, but they just don't have, they don't make a lot of money, I hear this all the time in the county, and it concerns me. Because as we rush to bring people in and make this a bedroom community for New York and New Jersey, we're forgetting that there's a lot of people in the middle who just can't afford, nobody's, I don't know many people, they ask me, is it twenty-nine hundred, eight, a month for a two-bedroom, nineteen hundred? And I know the developers want to do this with the money, because they don't want to put a cheaper unit, and they want it all high-end. So they don't want the riffraff mixing with their high-end users, I get it, it's a game, it's been going on for years. But I mean, what is the requirement that you could give somebody?
So almost every program that we run, and we partner with Habitat for Humanity and a lot of their programs for home repairs, that's at eighty percent of the median income. So, for instance, we sold a house in Bethlehem last year to an affordable housing rate. The woman who bought it works for the Lehigh Valley Network, she's a practical nurse, she has two children, and she's making about forty-some thousand dollars a year, and she's mortgageable. All the people buying our homes are mortgageable, we serve that market, so we're serving people who are just barely mortgageable, and where Habitat actually serves people who may not be mortgageable, because they hold the mortgage. So, and we work together, we actually work together looking at different lots and to see which one works better for their formula or ours. But it is, most of our programs, most of the roofs we did, I would say sixty-five percent of them were elderly people on fixed incomes.
Glad you explained that, because I go out and people assume that if we do this, we're doing affordable, it's all Section Eight. And I said, no, that's not necessarily true, there's formulas, affordable housing is more than that, and now more than ever, I think that we really need to look at affordable housing, because the rents these guys come in and are asking for is just out of the world.
Yeah, I mean, the eight percent income people are actually being labeled more as workforce housing, it's people in the lower end of the workforce who are taking advantage of these programs at this point. All the people, most of every program we do is owner-occupied, so people for repairs, so that's people who own a home, you know what I mean? So that's people who own a home, you know what I mean? So we're not, we don't do a lot in rentals right now at CAALV, but just to give you an idea, the people we're serving. All right? Well, I'm going to get off here because you guys got a long night. Thank you very much.
Go ahead. I'm Alisa Barata. I am the Executive Director of Third Street Alliance in Easton, Pennsylvania, and I am a resident of Williams Township. I stand before you as the Chairperson of the Lehigh Valley Homeless Advisory Board and the President of the 33-county Continuum of Care to Prevent and End Homelessness. So I want to put a picture of the residents of Northampton County who are homeless, who could benefit from your $1 million TIF benefit. And that is 2,203 households that comprise 3,000 people. Of those households, 881 are households with children who are literally homeless. A million dollars means nothing to housing these people. If you break that out over 20 years, it's $45 a year for each household. That's nothing. So I'm here to ask you to really think about the impact that this has on the citizens of Northampton County who can't afford a home. Thank you.
Could you just repeat your numbers?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, it's my year.
Okay. 2,203 households comprising approximately 3,000 individuals.
881...
881 have children. Those children range from, you know, ages 18 to zero. We also have, by the way, 74 children between the age of, well, young adults, let's say, 17 to 24, who are homeless, and over 250 households who are experiencing and fleeing domestic violence. So the money that we're talking about is so important, and it's so small.
So if I asked you the same question I asked Mr. Weiss, with the project of this scope, what amount of money would make a greater difference?
I would say you need to ask for $5 million. It's going up because people need it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that was just a...
Really quick, Madam President, should we hear from the borough?
Well, he said he wants to go last. Go ahead.
Okay, I thought we were at last, I'm sorry.
What?
I thought we were at last. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, 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 we're not double-dipping yet. There's people waiting in line. You're waiting in line too? Well, let me let Armando up here.
I'll wait.
Thank you. Come on.
I don't have to get down in the morning.
It's an interesting evening with you three in the front, that's all I have to say.
Ring side seats. Good evening, council. Copies of my testimony should make their way around in a bit.
Thank you.
And I'll be doing a little bit of math, so apologies if I need to repeat some things. My name's Armando Worth, Mr. Pelican. I'm happy to be providing my perspective tonight on the TIF ordinance. As many of you know or may remember, I was here two years ago to oppose granting a LERTA for what would have been a warehouse project at the Dixie Cup site. And one year ago, I presented the results of a community survey to this body to inform future uses for the Dixie Cup site. Based on responses from that survey and my own conversations with residents, I am generally aligned with what has been proposed for the Dixie Cup site.
Armando, give me one second. We're trying to pass these, and I don't...
Sure.
I want to be able to hear you.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, there's two handouts there. So one is the testimony, one is an attachment, an op-ed, so hopefully folks get both of those.
Oh, this one is the, okay, I got you.
Yeah, one is the testimony and one is a...
Thank you.
An op-ed. So like I was trying to mention before...
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Based on the responses from the survey that I had done a year ago and presented here and my own conversations with neighbors, I'm generally aligned with what has been proposed with the Dixie Cup site. However, there are still questions, obviously, and issues that should be resolved before you, Wilson Area School District, or Wilson Borough vote on tax increment financing. I've submitted a copy of an op-ed that I wrote in the morning call where I highlight three issues with the current Dixie Cup proposal. Because bike path access on the northern end of the building and non-resident usage of a building amenities are issues that could be resolved by the development team themselves, I will focus on the remaining issue that we've already heard from some of my friends on, the buyout clause in the tax increment financing ordinance. Article 13 of the TIF ordinance states that the developer, quote, "shall set aside and reserve not less than 10% of such dwelling units exclusively for affordable housing by qualified persons," end quote. While this article goes on to define these affordable units by the poverty guidelines set by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, the final section of Article 13 allows any property owner, quote, "Any property owner of the dwelling unit within the TIF district may opt out of the requirements of this article by payment to the County of Northampton in the amount of $27,000 per unit for 10% of the total number of units developed to be used as part of the Northampton County Affordable Housing Initiative Program." You've already heard from some of my friends who are really glad they were able to come out tonight, and some speakers who emphasize the need for affordable units to be built out as part of this project, and others have argued how the 1.1 million would result, resulting from this potential proposal is insufficient to meet current housing needs. I agree with both of these perspectives and would emphasize another, the payment per unit must be significantly higher. As I demonstrated in my op-ed, the gap between fair market rent, as defined by HUD, for a one-bedroom is $1,137, and the actual rent for a one-bedroom being proposed, $1,800. The gap between those two figures is $663. That $663 gap, applied over the course of a 20-year TIF, comes out to $159,120 in lost revenue to the developer if they had just built that single affordable unit on-site. That's a significantly higher figure than the $27,000 currently in the TIF ordinance. And when you multiply that by 40 units, 10% of the 405 units being proposed at the site, the total is $6.4 million. What I did not indicate, though, in my op-ed, is that these numbers are incredibly conservative. While some outlets have reported the rent for a one-bedroom at the redeveloped Dixie Cup site will be $1,800, others have reported $1,900. And this $100 difference in monthly rent, applied over the course of a 20-year TIF, results in $183,120 in lost revenue for a single unit and a total of $7.3 million for all 40 units. But this is only one figure in the calculation. HUD's fair market rent for Northampton County is not the same as rent for, quote, "person of low, very low, or extremely low," end quote, "income levels." As one would guess, each of these categories comes with its own allowable rent thresholds, many of which would fall below the previously stated fair market rent of $1,137. In other words, the gap between a truly affordable rent and the market rent is likely even bigger than I've suggested, meaning that the aforementioned $7.3 million figure could go even higher. All of this math has been done in the absence of an explanation of the origins of the $27,000 per unit figure. Who determined that $27,000 per unit was a fair contribution? How did they come up with that figure? I've already demonstrated that the numbers that I'm using are conservative, and yet these numbers do not result in 1.1 million, but 6.4. I absolutely agree with Executive McClure that this ordinance will send a message to developers, and I agree that they should contribute to affordable housing needs. And it is precisely because of this agreement that I am urging you to amend the ordinance and raise the payment per unit to at least $159,120. And while I can empathize with individuals who have a history of the Dixie Cup site, I'm firmly focused on this site's future. I'm focused on what my son will see when he gets out of school, where he'll go to meet up with his friends, and how this site receiving a 20-year tax benefit will impact his life in the community. He is four years old right now. Under the current proposal, this site will not pay its full value in taxes until well after he graduates from Wilson Area High School. And if we're willing to make that kind of long-term commitment, the least we can do is ensure the terms of this deal fully benefit current and future community residents. Thank you, and I look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions, Mr. Gafredo?
You said $160,000 per unit, that for 405 units or for 40 units? I'm just trying to get your...
Sure, so the, yeah, so the $159,000, $159,120, that is the lost revenue for one unit, which is calculated from the gap, the $663 gap of fair market rent to what is actually being proposed for the facility. You multiply, so that figure comes from the 20 years, the 20-year terms of the TIF.
So you would suggest if you found it equitable for the amount of money, that they would supplement it to the low-income housing, it'd be that times 20 years, 160,000? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'd say at least that, given the fact that the current figure is 27,000. And again, I also kind of came here hoping to hear where that figure came from, because I'm wondering who decided 27,000 is an equitable figure, when we've already heard from folks who've demonstrated that it costs more than $27,000 to build an affordable housing unit.
Thank you for coming, and I, you know, I know you've been here before, and the research you've done. I did research, I like to do a lot of my research, but I, you caught some things that I didn't, so thank you for that. And I agree with you. I mean, what happens oftentimes is these guys swoop in, and I'm not picking on him, developers in general, investors, they swoop into a local government, and they want to sell you the sizzle, but don't want to get into the steak.
Sure.
You know, "Oh, we're going to do this, we're wonderful." At the end of the day, they want to make money. I mean, it's like government should probably stay out of a lot of this business stuff if possible. We're not good business people. These ladies that were here before, the workers, we do service. That's what we do. We provide services to the people who actually live here or live here. And when we dabble in this stuff, we're just, it's brochure stuff, but anyway. Your analysis says that somehow this $27,000 figure, or 2,700, I'm sorry.
27,000.
$27,000 figure. Even all the research you did, you can't figure out how they came to that.
No.
Yeah, and we haven't had that explained. I'm not, I know I missed a meeting or two, I watched them.
I mean, that's part of the reason why I thought it was an interesting question of asking, who wrote the TIF? Because I'm sure they would have an answer of where that figure came from.
There's pages of questions for the actual developer. So really, in your calculations, I'm sorry, because I want to make sure I got this straight, in the calculations you did, you were saying at a conservative space, you were looking at about 6.4 million.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, $663 times 20 would come out to the $159,120. And so that's, and that's, again, based off of the fact that one outlet said that the figures that would be for a one-bedroom in this facility, in this site, would be, the rents would be $1,800. There's other outlets that have said it's 1,900. So if you just, even if you just change that $100, that figure goes from 6.3 to 7.3.
Yeah, I think I did, I used an average of the two and the one.
Right.
And, you know, the amount of money is astronomical, what this guy's going to have coming in.
Yeah, and if...
Plus tapping into the TIF to do the actual work.
Right. And just one point that I do want to make, because I think that it's an important one, specifically with regards to whether or not, whether the TIF gets granted or not, if the site is, if its project's going to move forward or not, putting aside whether or not that is the case or not, that's on the developer, but the question that I want to focus on specifically is leveraging the TIF to actually get something for the community. And I think that that's something that has been coming up a couple of times. There can be a whole argument that can be made about whether or not this particular developer deserves to get this, or whether or not we should be giving tax benefits to any developers who are coming in that are funded through private, I'm not interested in that conversation, but the fact is that this TIF does have an affordable housing component built into it. And yes, 1.1 million is better than zero. I don't think 1.1 is enough, for all the reasons I spent my testimony talking about, but I do think that if the TIF can be leveraged to get some of those kinds of concessions for the community, and there's other ones that I mentioned, but obviously spent most of my time doing the word problem with you all, this could actually be a good deal. Like I mentioned before, I did a survey with folks in the community. The uses that are predominantly going to be in this project are generally the ones that came back as being the most favorable. And so just from that perspective, like the proposal itself, there is, there are some points that could be quibbled on with that, but that is separate also from the TIF, which is what we're here talking about tonight.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Let it keep it moving.
I'm used up in Mount Bethel, I only get three minutes, so this is a luxury here to get five minutes. Low-income housing is a nationwide issue. It's not just an issue here. And the problem is, is inflation amongst other things. People have to pay more for groceries and more for anything based on oil. And yet, if you listen to the federal government, they want to take those two things out of inflation, so inflation's really not that bad. So the government right now is creating even more situations for low-income housing. That's kind of sad, but anyway. My wife says I shouldn't be a philosopher anymore. It's kind of nice to be my age, I can be a philosopher, while I'm not feeding the cows and smoking cigars. This TIF, the 1.1 million, I presume you're not going to vote on anything here tonight, because the golden rule here always is, borough first, school district second, county third. Now, unless somebody's blowing smoke up your n***a, that's, you know, you need to pay attention to that. And as far as Wilson Borough, I wasn't impressed what he knows about what's going to happen in Wilson Borough, but that's my point, I'm a little bit, a little bit, whatever. But anyway, the developer had remediation done, environmental problems. Are you aware that he was sued in federal court for $277,000 because he hasn't paid the bill? Now, I'm not, I don't know Nat Hyman, I really don't know him, but I do know his reputation is very good. Whatever he builds is done right, and he does what he says he's going to do, and it's what he does. You can say this outfit, Skyline, whoever, by the way, do you know who Skyline is? Can any of you tell me? Yeah, thank you, it's one guy, thank you very much. Where's he based out of? New York City. But he'll give you all kinds of locations around the country. And I'm wondering, is he part of the Skyline International thing? But again, if this was such an important issue, why is somebody, by the way, I still have a flip-up phone, works very well for me, why is somebody here giving you this? That guy should be here. Why isn't he here? Nate Hyman did come here, and he left, maybe he had another appointment, but he did come. But he didn't pay the $277,000. You're right, Mr. Heckman, he hasn't paid the taxes either. But he's got his foot in the door now. He did do his few things around there. So that's called getting your foot in the door. That's the smoke and pony show. And he's done pretty good at that. But I think one of the things that right now bothers me the most about this whole thing is, is Mr. McClure came up to Upper Mount Bethel, where I live, the little village of Upper Mount Bethel. He was opposed to LERTA for the power plant, coal-fired power plant. Everything underneath there is coal ash, and it needs environmental remediation. He was opposed to LERTA for there. And again, that would have created jobs of the people cleaning it up, and the end result is that industrial park, but he doesn't happen to like that developer, but evidently he likes this other developer. That developer was going to create manufacturing jobs, okay? As it exists right now, thanks to his being opposed, and some of the people in Upper Mount Bethel buying into what he said, the issue now is, there's going to be probably warehouse and truck traffic. That's what the people didn't want, because he stalled this thing so long and doesn't want to go along with the School District Economic Development Authority on remediating the plant up there. So alls I would say to you in passing is, I wouldn't do anything on this project, though I had a whole lot of more answers. I mean, there are so many unanswered questions here, it's mind-boggling. And I'd like to see Mr. Hyman, and whether the guy ever does show up here someday, give you their versions of what it is. But again, using the term that Nate Hyman is trying to torpedo this project, I don't know that I see it that way. I think he's offering a realistic thing. But again, when you talk about the tax benefits, EIT, I know how EIT works, it doesn't matter where you work, it comes back to where you live. These apartments very well may be people who are coming out of New Jersey or New York. Easton has become a destination, great restaurants, a lot of great things here. Go over to Bethlehem, they got the casino. This may be people who don't have any earned income, so they're not going to pay that. So they want to tell you about all these other benefits that are going to come in here. The bottom line is, they've got their foot in the door, and they believe they've got the inside track, thanks to the executive, quite frankly. And that's what always made me leery of homeroom government. Homeroom government was supposed to be, back then when they sold it, Mr. Heckman might remember this, it was going to be like a corporation, a board of directors, you're corporation, a board of directors. You're the board of directors, and Mr. McClure would be the CEO. Sounded good. Some counties bought into it. Most of the counties didn't buy into it once they seen it was dysfunctional, because there was too much authority giving to the executive. He operates all week long. You guys come twice a month. And that is a real problem. But maybe I can hit my last thing before I sit down, because I want to bring it up under your next thing. Your $63.5 million non-elective bond issue that you want to flow, why wouldn't you put that before the people to vote on it? We have a country that's in debt beyond our imagination. Our kids and grandkids will attempt to pay off some of this debt in years to come if they can ever do it. And then I think Gary and I talked about this. This should be up to the voters to decide on this bond issue. This shouldn't be a bond issue based on, the voters don't have a say in it. It's their debt. They'll be paying for it. But the long and short of it is, I think you guys and gals are trying to do a good job, but I think somewhere's along the line, there's some stuff being done that's not good. Not being done by you, but it's being done, and it's not good. And it's being done behind the scenes. And one has to wonder, what is in it for people that get into these things? Other words, would this project, if the last name wasn't Rehman, would this project have got this far with this developer? I don't know. It does happen to be Rehman. I don't know. But I listened to Mr. Margul. I don't see the benefit in all this for Wilson Borough. I believe a certain way the TIF might be done could be beneficial to them. I don't see it beneficial the way it is. So maybe you guys need to come up with your own idea of what a TIF should be and tell the developer, this is what we see as a TIF. But again, low-income housing is a national project. No matter how much money you put in, you're not going to solve that right here in the old Northampton County. My five minutes is up?
Thank you very much. I'm glad to see you kept keeping track of the time. Thank you.
Excuse me. It's past my bedtime. I'm leaving.
Are you just saying goodnight, or did you want to talk?
I'm saying goodnight.
Oh, thanks. It's past my bedtime, too, but I can't go. Mr. Barrett? Well, no, he was not recognized, but he made a statement, did he not?
First of all, I want to say congratulations, Linda. You picked a heck of a night. Let me just say that right now. Congratulations. I've only been doing this for six years. You did this for, what, 27? Is that what you said? I don't even know if I'd have that in me right now. So yeah, I just want to kind of let you go. So there's a benefit of going last, and I like to kind of listen to everybody first. I got to listen to everybody comment and talk about the, where the money should go, when it's actually the town that I live in. So as you all know, I'm the mayor of Wilson Borough. I lived there almost my entire life, except for the time I went to school. It'll be 54 years this June 29th. The Dixie Building has been empty for what will be this year, 41 years. The only reason I know that is because the council president was born 41 years ago on June 29th. So it's kind of coincidence. Both of us are born the same time. For the past 40 years, Dixie Factory has remained vacant. Several developers have shown interest, prospered, you know, various uses. There's been a bunch of different things. The current developer, the current developer is considering transforming the site into market rate complex. In 2022, Wilson Borough and the Wilson Area School District, we approved a LERTA, and it was designed for a project for the Dixie Building, demonstrating commitment to the redevelopment of that building is what we put that LERTA through. However, the LERTA was rejected by county council. And following the rejection, there was a survey circulated about the Dixie Building and Wilson Area School District being the two largest taxing authorities. We were kind of disappointed with the fact that the LERTA was shot down, because listening to all of you here, you definitely want to see Wilson Borough prosper, and we are kind of cash-strapped the way stuff is going. So there was a survey distributed via emails to members of Northampton County Council, the county executive, municipalities across the area, flyers, leaflets disseminated to residents and small businesses in Wilson Borough and West Easton. This was done between August 20th of 2022 and January 14th of 2023. Now, I'm going to talk about some math here, because the other person who was before me was talking math. There are approximately 8,156 people in Wilson Borough. That's 8,156 people in Wilson Borough. That survey that was presented and is talked about in the paper all the time and presented by a treasurer for the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, a pseudo-judicial committee put together, but is being presented constantly by that. I don't know if that's a conflict of interest, considering that individual was nominated by county council, or by county, to serve on the planning commission. And if he's not the treasurer, then his LinkedIn profile is wrong. But that number represents a mere 0.197% of the borough. So we're basing a survey on 0.197% of Wilson Borough. Now, I looked over the survey again, because of course, we got a copy of the report, and I thought, well, maybe something's wrong, because I'm a math guy, too. I do statistics and stuff. And he also broke it down by zip code. There are approximately 41,570 residents in zip code 18042. Thinking maybe the number would get better, that actually represents 0.13% of the population. So the numbers weren't there for this 121 people that are surveyed. It's important that the apartment complex is also going to be categorized as a business. LA Fitness was in Wilson. Do we demand that they use the swimming pool at LA Fitness, or we walk the track in the building because we're borough residents? It's a business, okay? Anything that goes in there, I don't have a sense of entitlement to do that. My dad always told me, work for what you get, and you try to do that. So as a business, I was kind of disappointed to hear that. I don't go to McDonald's and tell them I don't like hamburgers. I want them to serve spaghetti. I just kind of think that's kind of out there as well. And it's, you don't go to a museum and go to the restricted areas just because it's a public museum. Okay? Now, I understand there's going to be tax incentive and stuff behind it, but the property owners have rights, and the property is used to see fit whatever's within the zoning regulations. Now, Wilson Borough has had their planning commission meeting and their zoning meetings. They're both hearings that were open to the public, where Skyline set out, and they set all the plans straight. They showed everybody there. They were voted on the variances, and everything was put in. It was advertised. It was in the paper, and it was open to the public. The people who are here tonight, who wanted to give public input, did not show up. We had borough residents who were there, but the folks who were here tonight did not show up for public input, nor were they at some of the other council meetings where this was discussed. Now, we're still working on the TIF right now. Everything's been put out there, but it seems like every time that this project, or any project at the Dixie Building is put together, there's an op-ed. I'm sorry. I'm not in this for publicity. I'm not in this to show that I'm bigger in the community than I am. I'm worried about the people of Wilson Borough in the long term. 41 years, that building has done nothing. The taxes are paid. The tanks are out of the ground. The only thing that really needs to be abated is the lead paint. There's a lot of stuff that's going in there. So it just kind of bothers me. The one other thing that kind of bothers me for tonight was when Mr. Hyman came in, the gentleman in the back row who just spoke before me, said, hey, are you ready for the show? This is not a show. This is the borough of Wilson. This is the people in the community. I am a member of the Lions. I put on carnivals for my town. I do everything I can from the egg hunt on. I am not in this to be on the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. I am not on this for any reason other than to make Wilson Borough a better place. I've seen the Russo Brothers come in for development. I have seen Nick Tapaseras come in for a development. I have seen Skyline come in for a development. And we have just been sitting here. Is this going to put a strain on infrastructure in the borough? Yes. Are they going to need help? Most likely, because I don't have the money. I'm living paycheck to paycheck, just like everybody else in the community is. So, you know, I just, I just don't see where everything is going. It's an op-ed. We still haven't decided on the TIF. We are meeting with the school board on Tuesday. So the Wilson, the Wilson Council will be discussing it Monday. We're going to be discussing the TIF. We haven't adopted anything. We are sitting down Tuesday. Neil and his friends from Skyline will be meeting with us as well. I will open the invitation from anybody from county who would like to sit in and discuss it, because I think this is something that needs to be discussed by all three parties. Unfortunately, the school district is first, because they're 65% of the taxes. The borough is second, and county is third. But this impacts everybody. Our police department, our police station is smaller, considerably smaller than your council chambers. Everybody is hurting for police coming in. So we have needs as well, but at some point, we have to start doing something about it. I've been in this for six years, six and a half. I don't know if I have another four years in me. It's tough. But I think you can tell by my speaking, every time I come down here, it's about passion, about my borough, and it's about my residents. Not about entitlements for me, but trying to make it better. I definitely think this is going to make it a better, a better place and a better community. I wrote most of my notes down, and I did go off. I also was thinking about making my own survey about a property on Lehigh Street to see what color we should paint it, and if we should have access to the private property parts on it. Because I know when I go for a walk, and I'm up that way, I walk three miles a day. I might have to go to the bathroom. So using the public restroom at somebody's house might be really nice. Also being concerned about the environment, there's stones in front of their house, but a 25-square-foot of grass supplies enough air for one person to breathe. So, and it also cleans the air. So if we're talking about environmental impacts, that might be an option as well. And I say that very tongue-in-cheek, but I'd be more than happy to put something together, because turned about is fair play. And under the First Amendment, we can do pretty much whatever we want for free speech, so. I know you folks have some questions, so I'm going to hit you up on it.
I have one question. Is anybody else here from the school board tonight?
Nobody was here. We're meeting on Tuesday. They couldn't make it tonight.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Gufran.
Mr. Mayor, we spoke before the meeting.
Yes.
And I made it a point to say that your opinion will have a heavy influence on my general outlook on this project. I'm not going to preach, but my personal opinion, I don't think you guys are getting as good of a deal as you could get. I think, if it was my opinion, I think we should table this, like you said, at school and the township or the borough, I'm sorry, vote first, and then hopefully make this more lucrative or appealing, because I do understand what it feels like to be in your position. I kind of voted against my general principles of having government get involved in these types of things, when I voted for the LERTA for Upper Mount Bethel, because I think they're in a very similar situation. They needed some help to get a project moving. But I'll tell you right now, it's not all, you know, there's a lot of pitfalls in that outlook.
It definitely is.
And I think we're dealing with them right now, as Mr. Angle touched on. My general instinct is, though, this seems a little too good to be true. And unfortunately, yes, they are the, it's the offer that's on the table, and you're afraid to see it go away because you're afraid of what will happen if it's not there. And yeah, the future for Wilson Borough is uncertain. The town that I lived in, my high school, got shut down. There's no jobs. It could get bad real fast.
Exactly.
But it doesn't mean you sell to somebody you don't know.
Exactly.
So just look out for yourself. Make sure you guys are getting everything you're looking for and more. And if they don't make you as happy as you need to be, there's always other offers out there.
Yeah, like I said, I'd like to see you folks. We are meeting with the school board on 11th at 5:30. It's going to be, so we're going to have a couple of representatives from council, some representatives from the school board, and we'd like to have county there as well, because we think that this is a three-way thing. It's a problem that needs to be solved, and we need everybody's input on it. And like I said, the design team will be there, and I'm sure that they'll have the answers that we're looking for, because I think we all need them.
And then one last point.
Yes.
I understand, I agree with your philosophy, you know, private property, if it's your, you know, I understand everybody has an opinion, but if something's private, it's private. But unfortunately, when you come to county government or local government-
Yep.
-and ask for money, opinions are waged. And, you know, if they want to buy this with their own money, they can do whatever they want with it. But if they're asking for our money, they're going to get our-
Exactly. Yeah, I do agree with that as well. It's just a matter of if it would be somebody else, or it'd be another business. I just feel that because we're all getting involved, now there's all kinds of demands. And I don't feel like we should be putting any demands on anybody. It just needs to get done.
And that's why you need to make sure-
Yes.
If you go with the TIF, make sure you love it.
Yep, exactly. I'm sorry. I'm calling on people. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure during the course of your tenure as mayor, was there a possibility years ago that this site could have been a warehouse?
Yeah, there were, there were three or four different times. So we had, it was actually labeled as a last-mile logistics center.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah. Nick Tapaseras came in. He presented a plan. It wasn't as detailed as Skyline, but it was a live-work-play environment. So you would have like a percentage of it being living places. You would have a place of it being, amount of it being for play or like activities, and then a pound of it would be last mile, which would be assembling, minor warehousing and stuff like that. And it was, it was shot down. We were told that the LERTA was the most generous LERTA they have ever seen. It was a county council. And what was really kind of amazing was, we were talking about truck traffic and pollution, which is why I brought that up jokingly about the grass. There's that parking lot that we were talking about that goes with the Dixie Factory. That parking lot, for almost four months, was filled with tractor trailers to the point where you could not walk between them.
Yeah.
I have pictures of it, but it's always, it's always there. And everybody's worried about the truck traffic and everything else. It's, it was a factory before. It's a, if it was a factory now, if it was an apartment, traffic is always an issue at 25th Street.
Right, but as I mentioned, when this was first proposed-
Yep.
When my grandfather came home from World War II, for decades, he worked at the Dixie Plant there, loading and unloading trucks. That's what he did. But I asked about the potential warehouse, because, and I agree with what, what Mr. Gufrado just echoed, there's a concern about this potentially going away. That's, that is a legitimate concern. That's a concern for me, because could it be a warehouse in the future? Absolutely. Do I want that? No, we've got too many cement cities here in Lehigh Valley, Northampton County. That's where I'm coming from on this, Mayor. And I echo a lot of your sentiments as you were speaking tonight, because while certain, while at times, public policy is not 100% perfect, sometimes you take what you can get.
Yeah, exactly.
41 years?
I got a year and a half left. I don't know if I can keep doing it. And this was, so let me tell you, I told them the little backstory beforehand. When my dad passed away in 2020 from COVID, not from COVID, from lung cancer during COVID, I had COVID the week before he died. He died on Christmas Eve. We had conversations. He took pride in the fact, he told me, I gave him three grandkids, bought a house, graduated college. He told me he was proud of me because I was mayor. And he told me that, get the Dixie done. Like, get this thing completed. Before you're done, don't quit. My band director, Bill Colonel, I had the text message. It was great. He goes, Joe Rehman's had that building forever. He just sits on it. Don't take your foot off his throat. Get that Dixie building done. It's been sitting long enough. He goes, I have been at graduation after graduation, and that building just sits there. So for me, it's kind of personal to get this done. I know, like, I'm not going to, I know the gentleman behind me, and I'm not disrespecting him, because he's been in the borough for six years, as of September. So he came in in 2018. But for those who've been there forever, it's, when I came home from trips, and I said this before, you knew you were home because the Dixie was a beacon. You knew you were there because you saw, you can see the cup from I-78 when it was lit up. So it just needs to get done. So I'm looking for the collaboration. Like I said, Tuesday, we will be down there. If anybody's interested, let us know. But we will be down there talking with Claudia and the development team. We will be talking with the school district, and we all have concerns, which is why we haven't voted on it yet. But it's something that I think that the three of us together can come up with a solution and make it work, along with the developer, as opposed to just saying no to everything. I think we just need to rework everything we possibly can. And like I said, everybody's like, oh, this is a done deal. It's not a done deal. My police department, like I said, we are in dire need of stuff. There, this is, we are the most populated, we are the most densely populated square mile in the state of Pennsylvania. This is going to add to it, which I'm excited about, but at the same time, it's also something that worries me, because there is a lot, you know, there.
We don't need another warehouse.
No.
We don't.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
You said about there weren't LERTAs, council, or whatever. I'm sorry, but you said there weren't LERTAs, but wasn't there a LERTA at one time that we gave Rehman some years back?
It was a K O Z, and I believe it was almost 30 years ago.
Okay.
And I think there's seven years left on it, if I'm right?
I don't remember, but I know he did something. I don't think I was on when it was passed. But I mean, he didn't, you know, he didn't do a darn thing with it. And, and I feel, look, everybody wants to see something done. I feel for you guys. I mean, you have, you have a tough road. Local government isn't easy. Yeah, that's why so many people want to go to the upper-
All the blame.
Yeah, yeah, you know, get out. There's no courtesy of the floor up there either. But the thing is, I wanted to ask you, the K O Z, so we have to find out if that is even still in effect.
I believe there's, I believe there's a couple of years left on it.
It's finished?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm distressed by Rehman, and I've brought this up before. And I know you're distressed, too. I get it. The guy just seemed to sit and, and the company ended up paying him 13 million or whatever and pay his back taxes. I mean, that, but that's on them in that sense. I mean, I'm, I don't know if all the citizens in Northampton County have to take care of them because of that they overpaid for an old building. But when it comes to using it as a warehouse, warehouses have been thrown around. Mr. Angle brought up a good thing. I voted for the thing up in, up in Mount Bethel, because, not for the warehouse, so that he could give the tax incentives to manufacturing, which he had said he wanted to do. So my vote was for manufacturing, but it became a political football, and it is all, everything you're doing is for warehouses. I don't want to see a ton of warehouses, but at the end of the day, most of the emissions, you talked about grass, and the planning commission put this out, 67% of the carbonization emissions are passenger vehicles. And if you're talking about long-haul trucks, it's 11%. So, I mean, I don't like looking at big trucks. I hate to get behind them, but they actually tend to fly to the big interstates. Traffic, and I feel bad, because I know what's going to happen, and you know it, too. If this goes through and you get all these apartments, the traffic already that you have to deal with at 25th, it's insane.
Yep.
And I know you're going to probably need help. I'd like to know, you know, see their latest traffic survey that this company did.
Yeah, they did, they did present that. So, once again, I think that, I think that's with the developers and you folks. There was a lot that was done at Planning Commission that I don't- There was a lot that was done at Planning Commission that I don't think, like I said, I think the three bodies getting together and putting everything together would be completely beneficial.
Yeah, yeah. But thank you, thank you for your-
And also, just I wanted to, I know Mr. Margul didn't have the answer for it, but yes, Joe Rehman was fined when I came in. Like I said, one of the big focuses was the Dixie building. We did fine him.
Yeah.
And it was the max per every time. So it was, we were, we got to the point where our code enforcement officer, God bless him, was just tired of writing tickets all the time. Because it was, it was considered a, an attractive nuisance, the glass windows. He cut down a tree, which is a street tree, which of course shade tree commission. So there was stuff that he was fined for that was taken down. So it was, it's been a nightmare.
I spoke to a family member, like your dad, who worked at Dixie. And I met, we were talking, I asked them what they thought. They don't live in Wilson anymore. And they said, why are you, why do you want to keep the cup? It's a monument to another company that sold out the local labor and went south for cheaper labor. And I said, I'm not saying keep the cup, but I said, some of the people want to keep it.
But when the flood was in Easton, that was also the thing that supplied the water to the people of Easton until the, the flood was, until the flood waters were cleared up. Yeah. So there was a little bit of good behind it too. So, any other questions for me?
No, sir, thank you.
You got it, thank you.
Given that we are at the hour that we are, it states here that a discussion and possible vote on the ordinance may take place during July 3, 2024 council meeting. What I'd like to do is make sure Mr. Heckman has another finance committee meeting on June 18th, that we have some discussion there, if you have room on your agenda. And that if we want a second public hearing, we can have another pass at this on the 20th of June. Or do you want to wait till July? I don't want to do it on July 3rd, but we can. But I'd like, if there's other people that couldn't make it tonight that want to come and speak to this, or if we have other questions, we could put it on the agenda for the 20th. Because it seems like there's a lot and the other entities haven't been here to speak. So. I'm, I'd like to hear from them. So maybe we could invite them directly to come.
Madam President, do we have to make a motion to table it, or is it a right we have reserved?
I did ask while we were doing it because I'd like, I would like to push out the timeline, but my understanding is because the July 3 date was advertised, we need to put it on that night. And if you wish to table it, we could table it at that time.
For the July 3 night, but we don't have to do anything at this moment.
No, not at this moment. So is there any other old business to discuss?
Yes, Madam President, I have some old business. At the last meeting, we tabled the resolution that I had brought forward in support of our federal government and the United States Congress codifying Roe v. Wade in the future. There was a concern about some of the wording, specifically the right to choose sanctuary county. Resolutions are written to express the opinion of council members, and it is my opinion that I will always support any legislation that will support women. My constituents have contacted me in support of the original resolution and have asked me not to water it down or make it less than what it is. Women are scared, men are scared, families are scared. Rights have been, that had been intact for over 50 years have been taken away or restricted all over our country and are currently being attacked everywhere. I just read in the paper today, married couple in Texas, the mother was pregnant, they had had an ultrasound, there was a heartbeat, she started to miscarry. They had another ultrasound, there was no heartbeat. And the doctors in Texas were scared to do a DNC because of the laws there. She was ordered the medication, which expels fetal tissue from her uterus. It failed. She was ordered the medication again. It failed again. And then she was ordered it, they pegged the doctor to do the DNC. But the doctors were too scared. They gave her a third dose of that medication and her, her husband found her hemorrhaging on the floor and they said that-
Madam President, just a point of order, please, if I may. This resolution was tabled. Why is there a discussion on it? It has not been moved from the table?
Because I'm going to make a motion to bring it back.
Make the motion and then-
Why can't I talk about it?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, it's on the table.
And it's on, it's tabled. So if you're going to make a motion, then I would, I would ask you to make the motion and then we'll get into the conversation about it, that you're-
Okay, well, I was just making-
Finish your, finish your thought and then let's-
Well, you know, can I finish my thought or am I going to be on? I mean, what's the protocol here?
I'd like you to make the motion, but it's 9:45. If you could sum it up, it would be great.
Okay, well, yeah. This family in Texas did not get the healthcare they needed. Yesterday, Senate Republicans blocked legislation that would enshrine a federal right to access contraception. Every single day that I open up the newspaper, I'm reading how our rights are being taken away. And I would like to bring back, I would like to make a motion to bring back the resolution for codifying Roe v. Wade off the table.
So let me ask a question for you. Who's allowed to bring it off the table?
She can make that motion. It's on the, it's now on the table. There is a motion. You need a second and a vote of council.
Does it have to be somebody who voted yes or no?
No.
Okay, thank you. So you made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion regard? No, is there a discussion?
No discussion.
Thank you.
Take the vote.
Take the vote. The vote yes is to bring it off the table. The vote no is to keep-
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Vote yes is to bring it off. Vote no is to keep it on the table, correct?
Correct.
Just getting late, okay. Call the roll. Kelly was, the fir, Kelly brought it off and then Jeff seconded it. Sorry, Ms. Keegan.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Capora?
No.
Mr. Giovanni?
No.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman?
Yeah, I mean, we had a lot of people here. Let's get this thing over with.
Okay.
One way or the other.
Discussion on the resolution.
Can I continue?
Yes, you may.
So this woman was made to walk around with fetal tissue in her uterus, which can potentially cause a life-threatening infection. This is not healthcare for women. This is a prime example of threatening women's lives. I am a woman, I am a wife, I'm a mother, I'm a daughter, I'm a niece, and I'm a nurse. And I am witnessing laws changing all around our country, and I'm scared that it will eventually come to this state and this county. I want everyone to know that I hear your concerns. I am myself very concerned and I will support the right to choose. And I would like to vote on the original resolution.
Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Madam President. At our last meeting, when we were discussing this, I specifically talked about two individuals who I have known for quite some time that went through various personal situations. Friend in college was raped and impregnated. Another was trying to have a child with her husband. And finally, that joyous moment came and a few weeks later, was diagnosed with breast cancer and had to go through chemotherapy. And these folks had to do what they had to do. I appreciate Commissioner Keegan's comments and I echo her sentiments. And yes, abortion is still legal here in Pennsylvania, but perhaps not for long because, like it or not, we have candidates that are running for public office. We have a presidential candidate running for public office that will sign an abortion ban, a national abortion ban, if it ever comes to his desk, guaranteed. And women will die as a result. That is a fact. And as I mentioned at our last meeting, I believe it's important as public officials to put forth messages to the public in supporting issues that face our communities and our neighborhoods, things that can trickle down from the federal and state government, again, to our communities and municipalities. And no, we don't have to do it all the time at every meeting, but when it comes to the issues of freedom and it comes to life, when it comes to life, and I've heard so many individuals passionate about life, we have Miller Keystone Blood Center here, who I do a lot of work with. What do we do? We save lives. I want to make sure that women's lives are saved. And with this issue in particular, it's about constitutional rights and freedoms as well. We live in a time in which women's freedoms are being taken away here in the United States, like it or not. That's what's happening. And I want to be able to look my daughters, my colleagues, my neighbors in the eye to say, I voted on behalf of women's rights when I had the opportunity to do so. And yes, we may not be able to codify Roe here at, on this dais, but I want to be able to look those folks in the eye, so that I voted on behalf of women when it was proposed to me. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I, I just want to say, we've done many of these resolutions in the past too, and you're right, it's not going to mean anything. The state and feds don't care what we do. If they did, we'd get more funding for mental health and the things we actually do. They'll make speeches and whatever. I think that, my personal belief is, I don't think the government should be involved in anything an adult does with their healthcare. What any individual, man, woman, does health-wise should be between them and their healthcare provider. That's my feeling. Now, on the issue of abortion, we get into this, which you heard tonight, that I've had people come to me and say, well, what about viability? What about the child? You know, the language is on demand and sanctuary. And I would just ask a question. Who wrote this? Where did this come from, this resolution? What entity wrote this?
There was bits and pieces that I took that I liked from different resolutions and I put my own together.
Yeah, I mean, to be, and I'll be honest, I think you're sincere. I do, I believe that, 110%. And I think Mr. Warren's sincere. I mean, I, before Roe v. Wade, we all have stories we can tell about people we knew. I knew a woman, young woman at the time, before Roe v. Wade, and it was a very difficult situation for her. But my concern is, the way this is put out, it's more of a poke in the eye to the people who oppose abortion on demand, the way it's written, than it is to build a bridge to try and get understanding between groups that have passionate beliefs. And if the, if the result of it is, we're going to show you, this is what it is, I don't think that's what I want to do at local government. I, I've always worked both sides, and I know the state and fed now, it's all about following the leader. If the leader's your party, you do what they want. That's why we have dysfunctional government at the state and federal level. But here, I, I like being here. If I wanted to get into some of these issues, I, I would run for state office. I'd run for the federal, a federal office. I wouldn't get elected, but I'd run. And the thing is, I, I just, I made my statement on what I believe with people's health. That's all health. But at the same time, I respect the beliefs of people who talk about life and viability. And I'm not a medical professional, and I'm not going to pretend to, I didn't came here thinking I was going to vote on something like this. So I'm going to have to abstain because I'm just not, I don't want to vote no, but I can't vote yes. So I'll be abstaining because I just don't have the information, I feel, as a local councilman, to, to say with great certitude and morality that this is the way it should be. I just want to let that to the people. And in Pennsylvania so far, we're fortunate that it's available. I don't think you're going to find many people, Republican or Democrat, in the State House of Pennsylvania that want to touch this item. There's a few oddballs that go up, but you're always going to have that. But it's the kind of item that Pennsylvania generally have said, it's a terrible thing, we shouldn't have abortion, we shouldn't vote on it. And, and you know, I, I think it'll be safe here, but, but I can't really in good conscience vote yes, and I can't in good conscience vote no. So I'm going to abstain. I just wanted you to know that.
It's a very tough topic for me. You know, I'm a guy. I feel like this is political suicide for people to talk about, especially if you're on the pro-life side. I'm not going to get into the, what my thoughts are, at least not too much of abortion. I just think this is one of the most divisive topics that we can bring up. And for what? We're not going to change anything. We're not changing state law, we're not changing the federal law. You're not going to be able to change anything. This is a virtue signaling, divisive piece of legislation or a resolution that is going to do nothing but upset people, which people came in to argue their reasons why they supported or were against it. And for what? I keep going back to that. I, I, the, the whole argument of, you know, freedom of, you know, I body my choice or freedom to do what I want, that argument went out the window with me when COVID started. What we were allowed, the government to touch and not touch, is now becomes so blurred where, and now constitutional right for abortion, it's like, what are we talking about here? I don't want to get into the morality of it because my personal feelings on this subject are much different than my political feelings. My political feelings are, this has nothing to do with government, nothing. It is a divisive topic to make people fight, and we don't get things accomplished because we spend time fighting about these things, instead of worrying about things like a TIF in Wilson, which is actually going to affect people in our community. All this is going to do is create problems. It's going to create headlines, it's going to create fighting. I don't know why you'd want to bring it to this council. I don't think it's productive, and I think it's going to only hurt this body. I will be voting against it for that reason.
Any other comments? I stated last time that I didn't like the language. I totally respect your right to put it forward. I totally respect your right to put it as it is. I really wish you didn't do it tonight. I realize all these people were here, but we have so much business and it's almost 10 o'clock. So I'm going to stand with where I was last time and I will abstain. My feelings about this matter are mine. I know, it feels like such a gotcha move because you got to make a choice here, you know what?
You can make a motion to Amanda.
I, I did, and I wanted to talk to you about it, and we didn't have a chance to do it before tonight. I'm not going to wordsmith it at 10 o'clock. That's why I asked you to table it. I, I don't like the way it's written. I don't like the whole concept, and I don't like that it only focuses on abortion. I have a daughter too. I feel the same way. And everybody who came up here and told their stories, I have stories too. My stories. And you know what I hate the most? I hate the most that this is like, the women are being targeted in this, you know? Like, it's our choice, and it's our bodies, and it happens to us, but you know, there's a lot of men that came up here tonight with lots of thoughts and opinions. I don't hear men coming up here saying, I was responsible for six abortions. There's plenty of them out there. None of them are talking. But women are made to feel vilified and ashamed, and I'm just uncomfortable with it. And meanwhile, there's men up here and women with other reproductive health issues, and it's really narrow when we're just talking about one thing. So I, I just, I respect everybody's right, I got a barrage of letters, don't you dare, I don't want to be ashamed of you, you know, people don't know me. Some man's pushing a rubber baby at me, or a rubber fetus at me, give me a break. I don't care. It's offensive. We're here to do government work, as Mr. Gofredo said. And I don't need that. I have a mind and a reason. I'm not a doctor. And I am, the floor, sir, I will have them take you out. I am really at my wit's end. I appreciate your ability to do this, I just can't vote on it this way. But I really, I'm so tired of the, oh, well, she didn't vote for it, so she's not this, or, that man stood here and decided he knew who I was and what I was. He knows nothing, nothing.
Bottom line at the end of, oh.
Go ahead.
I'd like to call for the, have you call for the vote?
Let her finish her thoughts, sir, and then, go ahead.
So, bottom line at the end of the day, I see our rights being taken away every day, state after state, it's happening all over the country. Now we're talking about contraception. Sitting here, I would like to, I would like the upper people in that write legislation to know that I support this, and I would like my constituents to know that I also support women's rights. That's why I brought it forward. Now, I'm sorry that it's 10 o'clock at night, and it was a full agenda, but I would like to vote on it, so.
Call for the vote. I'm sorry, Tom, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, just so ticked off.
Well, I'm a father of two girls, and both of them had miscarriages. And I'm not going to support this bill, because they chose what they needed to do. Nobody stopped them, they chose, and they both had miscarriages. So again, you can tell me about all this stuff, this is not county business, I'm telling you, it's not county business, and I'm not going to vote for it.
Anybody else that I missed? Any last words?
Yeah, I got to say one thing. You know, when I came on this council, I literally ran for this buck position because I was angry with COVID. I was angry, but I did everything in my power to come here and hold my emotions, and kind of realize what was going on, because I was a newcomer. And I realized it would be pretty silly if I put a resolution in saying, hey, I want to, you know, succeed from the union, because I think they violated our First Amendment by shutting down the churches and schools. I could have went on all kinds of tirades and been a zealot. But what respect do you get if you go doing extreme, basically pointless pieces of legislation? It makes our body look less relevant, makes us look unserious. If you think this is serious, then vote yes. But I think what we're doing is belittling what we do here. We do not control abortion, that is not what we do in our purview, not. You could argue all day long that we do, it's simply not true. And for that reason, I hope going forward, that we can take a little bit more of a look at how we govern this body.
Call for the vote.
Ms. Kagan. But what, explain, explain the, what?
Yes means you pass the resolution, no means you don't.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Abstain.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Capora.
Abstain.
Mr. Giovanni.
No.
Mr. Gofredo.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
Abstain.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Resolution fails by a, oh, we got a vote.
Missed a vote, Mr. Warren didn't vote?
I did, I voted yes.
We've got, we've got.
Oh, I missed the third one.
3-3-3.
If I may, it fails, and I'm relying on Section 601 of the Home Rule Charter. You need a majority of the members for it to pass as a resolution, it fails.
Even with the abstentions? Okay.
Please don't. This was not easy. Is there any other old business? New business, introduction of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending the 2024 North Hampton County Budget, Community and Economic Development Administration, E911, Act 12, Interconnect, Administration Hazmat, Act 165, Sheriff, Court Administration, Juvenile Justice Center, Human Services, Veterans Affairs, Human Services, Homeless Assistance, Human Services Development Fund, Human Services, Children, Youth and Families, Human Services, Area Agency and Aging, Human Services, Health Choices, Human Services, Mental Health, Human Services, Developmental Programs, Human Services, Early Intervention, Human Services, Drug and Alcohol. Please, someone, I need a sponsor for this ordinance.
I'll sponsor.
Jeff Capora and Ken Kraft II. Public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at June 20, 2024 meeting. Next, we have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Council of the County of North Hampton, North Hampton County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the incurring of non-electoral debt by the issuance of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $63,500,000 covenating to pay and pledging all available taxing power of the local government unit for the payment of the bonds, providing for the establishment of a sinking fund and appointing a sinking fund depository, fixing the form, maximum interest rates, maturity dates, and other provisions for the payment thereof, authorizing the acceptance of a proposal for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing a filing of required documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, ratifying and directing certain actions of officers, and making certain other covenants and provisions in respect of the bonds. I need someone to sponsor this.
Sponsor, Madam President.
Second cosponsor.
Second.
Public hearing debate, possible vote, held at June 20, 2024 meeting. Consideration of a resolution to appoint an acting clerk to counsel. Mr. Giovanni, could you please introduce, could you read the resolution? It's stuck to the bonds.
It is hereby resolved by North Hampton County Council that Aileen Shenanet shall be confirmed in her appointment as acting clerk to counsel at a pay grade Group 6 Step 1A, 107,482, effective June 8, 2024.
Is there any discussion on the matter?
Could I just make a comment?
Oh, go ahead, no, go ahead.
I know there's been some words about the pay, and what the pay should or shouldn't be. I think it's important to remember that this is acting, and that generally speaking, county policy has been, if somebody steps into a role that already exists, they're paid at that rate. So when the time comes for a permanent decision, the pay can be looked at at that time, if counsel so chooses. But I had this question asked of me, and that's how I always remembered how we did this.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Warren.
I got to say that I am not happy with how I'm going to be voting on this. I'm not, I'm not happy about it at all, because my vote does not reflect the individual at all, but it reflects the process. I still have no idea what is happening in terms of hiring our clerk. We have 27 years of institutional knowledge here that is leaving. And I do not know what is happening with the replacement. I know this is acting, but for me, this is a process vote. This is a process vote. I still have no idea what's happening with this position in the future. And I want to be clear that this has no reflection on the individual, it is a process vote for me.
Yes.
I'm going to echo what Mr. Warren said. I, I have had no, nothing, I've been told nothing. So I, I don't even, when I was in Forkstownship, we worked together, we talked about it, we did the whole thing together. I have been kept, I don't want to say I've been kept in the dark, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm not saying that, but this process, I don't feel like I was included at all. And I'm not happy about the way I'm going to vote either. It has nothing to do with the person that's going to, that we're voting on.
Any other discussion?
I would like to bring something up. I mean, I'm pretty sure here you guys had your meetings and you have the votes. I don't know why you're appointing her as an acting clerk.
Wait, who had meetings, who had votes?
The personnel meetings, you guys had a meeting, I think you have the votes to make her permanent. I don't know why you're doing it as acting. I don't know why you're taking a step to make her acting for six months and then go right and say she's a permanent, the permanent clerk. I mean, you had your, we had resumes sent in, you vetted all the people, you've came up with Aileen, who knows the job. I'm pretty sure you guys have the votes to put her in as permanent, I don't know why we're doing this step of acting to permanent. You know, I mean, why, you're going to, she's going to see her acting for four or five months, and then you're going to make her permanent, like we did with Linda. So I don't know why you're doing the charade of, you know, let's make her acting, you know, she is the assistant clerk, deputy clerk, whatever we call her, she's been that for how many years? And it appears to me that you have the votes to just make her permanent, so I don't know why you just don't make it a permanent position.
Mr. Gofredo.
I don't know if there's like a conspiracy that I'm not aware of, but I'm pretty sure we're doing this because a lot of people had questions about the process, and the process is, we're hiring a new clerk. We don't have a new clerk, Mrs. Embo is retiring today, there's two people over there that know the job, so one of them's going to take the job until we find a new clerk.
It's a process situation.
I know, it starts today, with this vote.
They should have started months ago.
Now, the question is, because I had concerns about the, I said, wow, that's a huge wage increase, and I love Aileen, I think she's super qualified, and I make these kinds of decisions all the time in my daily job, I have to take the person out of it and make a business decision. I think that wage increase is a huge step. I think it's too much, and I think giving it to her as an acting, even be a bigger mistake, because you're going to pay somebody a wage of $107,000 a year in a salary, and then all of a sudden you're going to pull it back, after what, they get adjusted to it? I think it's a mistake. I think whether we make the final position, 107 for the finalized hire, that's a discussion we have later on. We can make an amendment right now to this and say, hey, I want to make it 85. We could have that discussion, that's what we do here. Why are we pretending like we all decided this already? I was away on vacation last time, I called in on the phone, and I was like, okay, good, we're going to talk about it later. Let's talk now, let's stop pretending like there's a conspiracy going on.
I'm not pretending there's a conspiracy, Mr. Gofredo, I didn't say anything as such at all. This should have been done months ago. Exactly, and there's a process situation that happened or didn't happen.
Mr. Warren, you are one of nine. Your ideas are just as valuable as everybody else. If you have a suggestion, make it.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Mr., wait, hold on, really quick, Mr. Gofredo, I didn't even know there was a situation. I didn't know that I was even able to make a suggestion about specifically what was going on with the hiring process, because it was under my assumption that the president of council was somehow taking care of this. And we were only briefed on this very recently, within the past month.
All right, I was at the same meeting where Ms. Vargo Hefner explained that she was trying to do her due diligence as president, working with Mrs. Embo, to interview a wide range, and if they narrowed it down, then we'd get more people involved. It made sense to me logistically, because I don't think it makes sense to bring nine of us in here in our spare time to interview 27 people, or however many people. Made sense to me, so I didn't make a big deal of it. Seems like everything she does, she gets berated about. For what? We're trying to hire a clerk, let's get a good clerk.
Mr. Gofredo, I have not berated our president one time in the six months I've been on this council.
I disagree, I disagree, and I don't want to argue anymore.
I take exception to that, I've been extremely respectful in the six months that I have been on this council. I have not berated you or the president of council at all.
I didn't say, I just said she's been berated, and I think you could go back and watch the videos.
Mr. Heckman.
Yeah, I'll be honest, with Mr. Kraft, I think in a small way, we might be agreeing on something here, we've agreed in the past, some things, not all. But I personally didn't know that we had to do a resolution in the sense that when Frank Flisser unfortunately had his issue, you stepped in and took, were doing his job. The whole point and purpose of hiring an assistant clerk that we got beat up for all over the place was just for this. I mean, let's say, God forbid, before tonight Linda had had a health emergency, well, what would happen? Wouldn't it be logical that the person you hired, the assistant clerk to counsel, would do the job until a process or something was done? So tonight, I don't, I mean frankly, whether we vote on this tonight or not, I would expect Aileen to start doing the work that she was doing. And as far as paying them, I just mentioned it as a standard operating procedure for the county, that, and to Mr. Gofredo, people, if she doesn't get the job, you know, however that plays out, she does not get to keep that salary. And I mean, if she gets used to that, I feel bad, but that's, that's how we've always done things. I mean, I don't want us, we sometimes, I come here and, honest to God, I feel like we're looking for a brown cow to get chocolate milk. It gets so complicated, we literally complicate the hell out of something that should be so simple, until something happens where we hire somebody, whether it's her or somebody else, I don't know, she should do the job she was hired to do in the meantime. That's all we're saying. I mean, I'm not saying that I didn't write the thing, but I mean, I'll vote for it, because somebody's got to do it. I mean, she's leaving, so somebody's got to do the clerk work. Even if we didn't vote on this tonight, she'd end up doing it anyway. So I don't, I get there's a bigger question here, and I respect that, but for tonight, this question, it's just a matter of, I don't know, I think she's going to be doing the work whether we vote on this or not, she just won't get the pay. So that's how my feeling is, I'm voting to do what we've done for everybody else.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Ms. Kagan.
No.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
No.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Capora.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted by a vote of 7 to 2.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of a Greysdale Nursing Home Union MOU resolution. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce?
North Hampton, whereas, North Hampton County Charter, Section 202, provides that the county council shall have the power to approve any collective bargaining agreements with officers and employees. Whereas, on June 3, 2024, county council receives a memorandum of understanding with the amendments to the contract between North Hampton County and the ASME District Council 88, Local 1435, to make the change to pay scales and pay rates associated with the bargaining unit LPNs and the CNAs in an effort to recruit, retrain nursing employees. The specific terms are shown in Exhibit A. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by North Hampton County Council that the attached memorandum of understanding shall be approved this 20th day of June 2024.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Ms. Kagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Capora.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of 9 to 0.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of health, safety, and welfare bond resolution for Lehigh Valley Health Network entities. Mr. Gofredo, will you introduce?
Whereas, the Monroe County Hospital Authority is a public instrumentality of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and a public body, corporate and politic, organized and existing under the Pennsylvania Municipality Authorities Act 53 PACSA 5601, Act 22 of 2001, effective June 19, 2001. There's a lot here. I'm going to pick it up from the, now therefore be resolved, is that all right? By the Board of Commissioners of the County of North Hampton, Pennsylvania, as follows, in connection with the financing of the project by the authority, the board declares it to be desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the area served by the North Hampton County facilities, and to have the project financed by and through the authority. Two, the approval granted hereby shall not in any way pledge or obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of the principal of or interest on any obligations issued by the authority. Three, notwithstanding any other provision of this resolution, the bonds, when and if issued, shall not be deemed an obligation of the county, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, or any other political subdivision thereof, and shall be payable solely from the payments made by or on behalf of Centurion. No recourse shall be had for the payment of principal or the redemption price of or the interest on the bonds, or for any other claim based on the bonds against the authority, the county, or any successor body of the authority or the county, against any officer, board member, or employee of any authority of the county, past, present, or future, or against any other monies, accounts, rights, or other assets the authority of the county may now or hereafter possess. Four, in the event any provision, section, sentence, clause, or part of this resolution shall be held to be invalid, such invalidity shall not affect or impair any remaining provision, section, sentence, or clause of this resolution, it being the intent of the county that such remainder shall be and remain in full force and effect. Five, all resolutions or parts of resolutions inconsistent herewith are repealed.
Thank you. And our representatives here from Lehigh Valley, so grateful for your patience and tolerance, sir, I can't even, I wish I could just hand you money right now for having to go through tonight, and not even being part of this. I just need to let you know that I recuse myself from these votes, because I work for somebody that's not Lehigh Valley Health Network, so just because of that, but I support it. Anybody else have a discussion?
Let them have a piece of candy from the office.
We have cupcakes, you get three. Yes, sir.
Can, I'm sorry, a lot there, can you just come up and just give us layman terminology of what exactly we're working on with here?
Thank you.
At least you can say you got up and spoke.
Good evening, my name is John Brodsky, I'm the senior vice president and treasurer of the Lehigh Valley Health Network. This is actually my fourth time in six years that I've been before this council, and I appreciate.
Has it always been like this? I just want to.
I think the prior one was, the first two weren't.
We got to talk about your timing.
But, you know, there's been some interesting and powerful issues discussed tonight, I think it's a privilege to listen to this. So anyway, yes, we are seeking approval for a transaction that involves us selling So anyway, yes, we are seeking approval for a transaction that involves us selling several of our healthcare facilities in multiple counties in the Lehigh Valley. We are doing this to raise capital and not to have to go issue direct debt. We are gonna sell them to a nonprofit entity and that entity, because of its nonprofit status, can borrow on a tax exempt basis. That's what we're asking you to approve. That money will be used to pay us for the properties, we will continue to operate them through leases, we will enter into 15-year leases, we have every intention of continuing to use those, we're fully responsible for maintaining them, all the, you know, upgrades and whatever, which we fully intend to do, these are important facilities for us. There are three in Northampton County, all on Highland Avenue, they were part of the old Coordinated Health Entity that we acquired in, in 2019. They provide a variety of services from inpatient specialty, sort of orthopedic related services, or it's physical and outpatient occupational therapy, there's a variety of medical services that are provided, again, continuing to use all of them. The money that we're gonna be raising from that will be used primarily for two new facilities, one in Heller Town, we're building another hospital, and we're also building in partnership with another entity, a behavioral health hospital. Those will both be, I don't believe they're in Northampton County, but they're proximal to, so they will be certainly, they'll be available for the county residents to make use of them. You know, we've been very active in building, you know, the last couple of times I've been here, it's all for building new hospitals, we've built five since I've been in the last six years with money that has been raised through bond financing, so, yes, sir.
So essentially, you're going to sell your real estate but continue to operate out of those facilities, is that the...
Correct. It's a fairly standard transaction, a sale, leaseback deal. If we could just mortgage the facilities through a bond financing, we'd do that, unfortunately, bond, tax exempt law doesn't let us do that. So we're going through a, a different mechanism where we've identified this other nonprofit that will actually own the facilities. Typically, you would just sell to a, a real estate developer and owner and enter into a more conventional lease transaction. We think this is a lower cost way to do it for us, so that's why we think it's advantageous.
So it's like you're taking a hybrid reverse mortgage of some sort?
I don't know about a reverse mortgage, but we are able to take the money out of the properties and use it for other purposes.
To build more. So after five years with these firms or whatever you call them that now own the place, are you obligated to run it after the five years or does it go to these private...
It's a 15-year lease and at the end of it, we have the right to...
Do you use the mic, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. These are, these will all be 15-year leases, at the end of that term, we can renew the leases, we can buy the leases, or we can technically walk away, but then they would have to be sold and we have certain obligations to make sure they're sold and the debt is repaid.
But who's buying it, is it for profit?
It's an offer called the Centurion Foundation and they were created largely to do this, to buy and to help facilitate healthcare facilities. Sometimes an organization may not wanna own the properties, but they wanna operate it so the Centurion Corporation can do just what they're doing for us now. They can come in and own the properties. But, but again, they're a, they're just an owner, we have complete responsibility for the use and operation, they can't tell us what services can go in there, we have, we have total control.
Okay, sure, thanks.
You talking about this Centurion identity or entity, are they, can you tell me about, are they, are they in equity, are they a capital raising equity fund, could they have owners from different parts of the world?
They're a nonprofit organization, 501(c) nonprofit organization, they're based in, in, in Georgia.
Based in Georgia.
And they, they've done about a billion plus of these types of transactions around the country. I believe this is the first one in Pennsylvania. But again, they're, they're not a private equity shop, they're not a for-profit shop, they don't, they don't benefit from, in terms of, I mean, we pay them a management fee to, you know, they will issue...
They raise their capital, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm curious about that.
Tax exempt bond financing.
Above my head, it's above my head. Thank you though, I appreciate it.
Well, they go, they go out to investors and say, we wanna raise $150 million and we're gonna turn that money over to the Lehigh Valley Health Network.
Private investors?
We private, you've heard, you know, the, the Americas Funds, Lord Abbott, Franklin Funds, these are traditional investors in municipal bond financing. Okay, these are tax exempt financings. And they look at the transaction and say, oh, Lehigh Valley is guaranteeing that the rents are gonna be paid and the rents are used to pay the death service on the bonds.
I understand, and I'm, maybe I'm, there's a lot of conspiracy talk here and I, I understand how the math works, I understand why it's a good investment for them, I just get leery when Lehigh Valley or, you know, a local entity is selling real estate to an unknown entity. In my eyes, you know, the real estate is very valuable and I just wanna make sure it's going into good hands and trusted hands, that's all.
Right. And again, as the, as the operators, we have control unless we decide to walk away at the end of 15 years. But again, yes, we do.
It's getting late, but could I just follow up on, these, we've, we've done similar things, but if you walk away, the land is owned by this company and they're a nonprofit. But in other words, I guess my question is, so they get to do whatever they want on that land?
Right.
They own the land, so yeah, I, I, I just, it's interesting, but thank you.
Yeah, but again, they're, because they're, you know, they're, they're really in the business of owning it and leasing it to others. So if we walked away and we didn't object, they could turn around to St. Luke's and say, you wanna buy these buildings?
But they're a nonprofit, so I couldn't imagine like they could turn around and say, well, we're gonna sell it to, I don't know, Jiffy Lube or something like that. Oh, that's what I'm asking him. I mean, I'm just curious what they're allowed to do, since you said they are a nonprofit.
Right, right. Well, again, these are...
And I know there's rules with nonprofits, you know that better than anybody.
Correct, these are specific purpose-built facilities, I mean, these are hospital and healthcare facilities.
Yes.
Turn it into condos, a Jiffy Lube, a warehouse, very unlikely.
All right. No, I mean, I understand, thank you.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Abstain.
Mr. Warren.
No.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Capora.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted by a vote of six to two with one abstention.
Thank you. Have fun.
Thank you very much.
Why don't you call me if you're coming back this year and I could tell you what night to come or what night to not come?
Well, this is important, we need to get it done by the end of June, so we appreciate this very much. And Linda, congratulations.
Thank you again for your patience, sir. Consideration of American Rescue Plan Nonprofit Assistance Program Grant Resolution, Miller Keystone Blood Center, Mr. Brown, will you introduce?
Whereas on March 11, 2021, President Biden signed into the law of the American Rescue Plan Act and whereas Section 603 of the Act addresses the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, providing for direct federal aid to counties and municipalities. One, to respond to the public health emergencies and to the residual effects as well as negative economic impacts of the pandemic, which include, including assistance to nonprofits who serve the citizens of the county of Northampton. Whereas Northampton County desires to grant Miller Keystone Blood Center with a grant of $250,000 for the purchase of a bloodmobile vehicle so that they may effectively continue to serve the residents and help save lives by collecting and providing a continuous supply of blood products and services. Whereas Northampton County Council is desirous to make grants to the projects in Exhibit A. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the County of Northampton, one, that the recommended grants in Exhibit A are approved, two, that the county executive of the, of the County of Northampton is authorized to execute grant agreements with the applicants not to exceed the approved amount for each grant.
Thank you. Are there any discussions on the matter? I think there's some representatives here from Keystone, if we have any questions. Again, thank you for your patience, we could've done this in two weeks, but if you really need the bloodmobile, we're gonna get it done tonight. Any discussion? You probably talked about it in economic development, call for the vote.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Capora.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss? Any committee reports? Go ahead.
At our last EELU meeting, Mr. Warren brought up the trash that were, that was on the exits on Route 22 and, and the Route 33, yeah, the litter. And we had wrote a letter together and sent it to the state legislators. Lisa Bascola's office reached out to PennDOT and they said that they were going to, they were scheduled to go out and pick the litter up on that Saturday coming up, so that was last week. So hopefully, hopefully it's better.
Thank you. The mental health, oh, that's a liaison, never mind. Personnel, finance, and election integrity is gonna be held on June 18 because Juneteenth is Wednesday, so we have to move, so just wanna, and I believe we're starting at 4:30, am I correct? Yes, so it's a half an hour later than normal, thank you for that. See you then. And any other committee reports? Do you want to report today?
We had economic development today, Slate Belt Rising came in for presentation and Miller Keystone, which we just voted on.
Thank you. Ron?
Oh, no, I'm gonna, Mr. Brown, you ran the human services?
Yes, I did, I'll send you the bill.
John, do you wanna make a report?
Thank you.
Yeah, Human Service Committee, we met, we heard an update report on the developmental programs and really the expansion of the services that we're providing through the county with a, a very committed staff, that was obvious. And then we also had an update on the Greysdale Union Memorandum of Understanding, which we took action on earlier this evening. That's all we had.
Thank you. Did you talk about the waiver increase with developmental stuff? How the, the... Did you talk about the waiver increase from Harrisburg or no?
She mentioned waivers, but not, not specifically, I recall.
Okay. Any liaison reports? Mental health, early intervention, and developmental disabilities met earlier this week. The community block rant is what I couldn't think of and I went blank last time, but those two hearings were held at the end of May and so any, any last remaining thoughts need to be presented to Tiffany Kush. The topic was, most people were reporting on where they were in terms of staffing and in terms of progress in the departments. The OLSdar or however many is still not open in Easton, which is very disheartening to hear, and the biggest focus of attention was about the lack of mental health services and the difficulty getting people into programs, so that will continue to be an ongoing, ongoing discussion. And that's all I have. Any council clerk report?
Do it.
Do it.
For the last time, nothing except to say thank you to everyone for your support and the comments you made tonight, so.
Thank you. Thank you. And congratulations to Aileen or condolences, depending on how you feel, by next Tuesday. And solicitor report?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Tommy, Kenny, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. What's my time? Longest on record.
Just wanted to say thank you again.